Um, Donna was meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
You can tip.
My trash.
Yeah, it's got fish and shrimp.
Okay, we are going to call this meeting to order at 6:01. And everyone is present except for Mr. Bellwell. So we will start off the meeting. We don't have closed session, so we'll just stand up for the pledge in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one indivisible. And if you feel so led, remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. We have one public comment tonight, so consistent with board policy, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an agenda item must comply with the following. By emailing in your comment to the PIO by four o'clock and the board welcomes public and its comments. We ask you to refrain from comments about any district employees without proper due process. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes to express her comments. In this case, Mr. Robinson will read those. Opinions expressed by speakers do not necessarily reflect those of the Board of Trustees or administration.
Okay, ready for me to read it?
Do we need to set the timer?
I think I can get it in five minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. This is from Juliana Swett. Hello to our executive leadership team and board members. Thank you for your time today. My name is Juliana Swett and I am the campus nurse at Hutto Elementary. I'm also the parent of two students in the district. I hope that as we continue to move forward through the pandemic, we remain focused on our shared goals and shared enemy. We remain in battle, not with each other, but with a virus that remains very real and very dangerous. I am writing to implore you to stand firm against pressure to modify or rescind the district's current pandemic safety plan. Governor Abbott's recent removal of safety measures such as the statewide mandate is not grounded in scientific evidence, is contrary to data-driven decision-making, and is not endorsed by public health officials. The changes that have been announced by Governor Abbott will lead to increased spread of COVID-19. As a district, the impact of COVID-19 on our students and staff is directly tied to the larger picture of community transmission. The district nurses and I are working very hard to limit transmission among our students, but we have had success because our district has established and maintained numerous mitigation factors. To now weaken, modify, or remove the tools we are using to protect our students and staff would be reckless. I understand that there were many who welcomed the governor's announcement with relief or joy. As a healthcare professional who has been twisting myself in knots to keep the virus at bay on my campus, I only felt heartache and exhaustion. Darker moments, I felt a sense of hopelessness as if nurses have been abandoned on the front lines, while those around us throw up their hands and surrender to a virus that continues to leave devastation in its wake. Please do not take away the tools I need, the tools that have proven effective to carry out my directive of serving the people on my campus. My only goal this year as the campus nurse is to get to the end of the school year with no student or staff deaths. I do not say that to be dramatic or hyperbolic, but as a plain statement of where my head and heart are amid this pandemic. These broader statewide changes are going to make reaching that goal significantly more difficult. We live in a society where we are responsible for and accountable to one another. When it comes to a deadly airborne virus that can be transmitted by asymptomatic persons for which humans have no full-scale immunity, a live and let live or you do you, you do you approach is incompatible with our shared goals. My individual comfort should not take priority over my role in another person's illness or death. We do not politely ask or strongly encourage others not to drink and drive. We do not stand idly by when someone acts in a way that can harm or kill the people around them. We should not do so now. My feelings aside, we are not a district that makes decisions based on anecdotes. If we want to pride ourselves on being data-driven, then we cannot balk when empirical evidence supports staying the course of the district's pandemic protocols. We must infirm as we move forward with inconvenient but wise decisions. No one wants this pandemic over more than the nurses, but we're not there yet. Please do not make any changes to the district's pandemic plan. Thank you again for your time and service to our community. Sincerely, Juliana Swett, Hutto Elementary School.
Thank you. So if you guys will notice, the remaining agenda items, we're kind of mixing things up a little bit tonight, so feel this bear with us and follow along. But the first thing that we have tonight is the TASB pay study and the recommendations. So.
So we have Ms. Patty Redding with us. She is on the screen and she's our consultant from TASB that will actually be giving the presentation. So Patty, are you ready?
Yes, good evening. Thank y'all for having me.
And Todd is gonna pull up the actual presentation.
Am I able to share my screen so that I can navigate through the presentation?
Well, I have like the issue we had last time. It's. Hang on just one second.
Okay, sure.
Robert, are you able to give that?
It has the green folder there.
That's for us to share a screen. We have to give her machine to share.
Look at the participants.
It doesn't give me the option.
Is it a co-host?
If you click more.
Yeah, when I click more.
There she is.
Option for her.
Is it because there's already two?
Multiple hosts, right? Or no?
Have to click on her icon or just the?
No, that's usually right there.
Morgan, you have any ideas? You're fifth.
Um, have you? What if you were to go to on the bottom there where it says more? That one? Yeah. Nope.
Hang on, let me look at it.
Let's plug that.
Yeah, I think on sharing it, there should be an option for it to allow anyone to share.
Oh, that's true.
Who can share? Right now it's on post save. See if we can.
Yeah, she should be able to do it.
I just clicked all participants.
All right, it looks like I have some ability. Are y'all seeing the PowerPoint?
Uh, maybe now it is.
There it is.
Go.
Awesome. All right, thank you, Patty.
Oh, of course. No, thank y'all. Y'all did great work troubleshooting that. Again, thank you for letting me join you this evening. I know for many of you, a lot of this will be familiar as we've presented to you each year, so I'm excited to be back to do that. As a reminder of our process, we start off our compensation review by collecting data from the district. And we have initial discussions to understand what compensation has been like the past year, what areas we might want to to make sure to focus on. Then we take that data and we compare it to market, making sure that we're aligning similar jobs in the district to similar jobs within the market. And then finally, we take that a market analysis and we're really looking at two components, pay structures and actual employee pay. And we make adjustments and recommendations in both of those areas as needed. So this is the same peer district list that we use from year to year when looking at market. We also use Austin area data for jobs that you are going to compete with outside of school districts, such as nurses and other licensed professionals. So diving right in, I like to take a look at teacher experience. And this represents all teachers and the experience levels that they had this year. And you can see you have a pretty diverse group. There's about 11% nearing retirement years, so you may want to keep that in mind. And then this represents the new hires for the 2021 school year. Again, you have the ability, you've been able to hire a pretty diverse set of experience, not all are brand new to the profession of teaching. And so that is really representative of a good and effective recruitment. And here is teacher pay at benchmark years zero, five, 10, 15, and 20. That orange line represents Hutto's pay at each benchmark and the blue line represents the market median pay at each benchmark. You can see Hutto is paying above market medians all throughout the pay schedule.
Yay.
I know. Y'all have done such a great job.
Thank you, Patty.
Of course. And this is just the numbers behind that graph, so two ways to look at it. You can see the difference from market medians on that bottom row starts out at about $500 above market medians. And at years 15 and 20, it's a little over $1,200 above market median. So again, good job. We also take a look at the teaching area stipends. And for each stipend that Hutto offers, you are either aligned or above market medians for those stipend values. You continue to be one of the top payers for bilingual at $7,000. And then here are the pay comparisons for all other non-teaching pay groups. Each line has the pay group, followed by the actual employee pay as it compares to market. And then the pay range midpoint as it compares to market. And for those non-exempt pay groups, we also include the pay range minimum as it compares to market. Overall, your structures are aligned with market or a smidge higher, which is a good place to be in. Actual employee pay is also very competitive, but you'll see for some clerical and auxiliary, it dipped a little bit below. And so in the costs, I'll show you some targeted strategic adjustments that were made to begin to address that. So our first recommendation would be to adopt a pay structure to maintain your strong starting salaries and midpoints and make any strategic adjustments to address any alignment issues. Secondly, adopt a general pay increase. We're going to show you three different models. A 1% general pay increase, which would be $550 for all teachers. A 2% general pay increase, which would be $1,100 for all teachers. A 3% general pay increase, which would be $1,650 for all teachers. And then, as always, each year, we want to make sure we are making any strategic or targeted adjustments, making sure people are paid within their pay ranges, so bringing those up to at least minimum where necessary. We also take a look at the roles that are typically in the teacher career pathways, such as counselor, assistant principal, principal, and make sure that they're earning at least what they would if they were in the classroom with the same experience years. And then again, those targeted and strategic adjustments. So I'm going to go through each cost model. This is the first one representing a 1% general pay increase. You'll see the pay group, followed by the general pay increase amount, and then any adjustments that were made totaling at the final column. So this 1% general pay increase has an overall budget impact of 1.5%. Next, we have the 2% model with an overall budget impact of 2.5%. And finally, the 3% model with an overall budget impact of 3.4%. And you can see in these adjustment columns, the targeted adjustments that were made for clerical and auxiliary. So I feel like I went through that pretty quickly. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Patty, can you go back to just the previous slide?
Yes, of course.
I know there's 1%, 2%, and 3%. So the general pay increase would, for all intents and purposes, just be kind of the step increase. And then the adjustments are the financial adjustments based on the market, correct? Is that a fair characterization?
So the general pay increase, the teachers, that is a flat amount to all teachers. And so for this model, it'd be $1,650. So it's not just a step increase, but a flat amount paid to all. And then for the non-teaching pay groups, it's a percent calculated off of the pay grade midpoint. So that's the general pay increase represented for those groups. And then those targeted adjustments are any additional adjustments based on what we saw with the market and opportunities to align to market. Does that clarify?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, great. Of course.
Can I go back just a few more slides as well to the? I'll tell you, I'm sorry, I lost.
No, it's okay.
I think it was recommendation number one, or maybe it was the, oh, okay. Okay, one more.
Okay.
And one more, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Go. Oh, are you going forward or back?
I went through all three recommendations.
Yeah, keep going back to the one that had, I just want to be sure I understand. Okay, this one here. The number of, the benchmarks that we're talking about are the localities that we're, or are sample of what we're comparing to. Is that correct?
The benchmarks.
FTEs.
The benchmarks are job titles, basically.
Okay, so they're FTEs, right?
Not, not FTEs, but so, for example, with campus administration, those are your principals and assistant principals. Right? So that's, that's seven different job titles across elementary, middle, and high school.
Okay.
But there's multiple incumbents.
Titles, not unique headcount. Okay.
Exactly. So it's not FTE, it's job titles. And so not every job has a benchmark match, and so we're showing you how many titles we were able to benchmark for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you do option one again?
Absolutely. The cost.
Yes. I noticed that's the only one that had the adjustment for teachers and librarians. What was that for the 3,000?
So that was because on this cost model, the increase is $550. And for, I think, one of the experience years, that amount is actually less than the differential between the other experience year. So we just had to add a smidge to continue a logical progression with the schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Any other questions?
As always, thank you, Patty. This will be a part of Glenn's presentations in the months to come. These numbers as we.
Well, thank you again for having me this evening. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, Patty.
Speaking of Glenn, you're next.
President, Board, tonight I'm here to give you an extremely preliminary peephole look at what we may be looking at next year as far as budget. I say preliminary because the three factors, basic factors that drive a budget are relatively, you know, they're always kind of unknown, but they're really unknown right now. One is we don't have property value certified. I had an estimate, but still not certified estimate from the appraisal district. Also, as far as students, it's really kind of a guessing game as are we doing COVID next year? We not doing COVID next year? What exactly is going to happen? I don't, you know, I have, I have data with non-COVID years and I have a one year of data with COVID year, so I'm trying to estimate that as well. So student projections are kind of hazy right now, and then we're in a legislative year. And so the template that I'm using and what we will adopt is, is current law. They won't, if anything changes in legislation, happen until after we adopt her. But if there are any major changes to that, then it's possibility that we would come after we've adopted the budget and do some budget amendments based on any new laws that may be passed. But again, this is our best guess estimate and just want to show some historical data of where we were in the last few years, where we currently are now, what we may project to have at the end of this fiscal year, and what we project our budget may be for next year. So we'll go to the first slide. First thing that we want to look at is enrollment trends.
The old-fashioned way.
There we go. As you can see, the district has grown quite a bit in the last few years. 39% actually from 1617, we went from an enrollment of 6945 to a current enrollment of 8548. There was a little bit of hiccup this year, and again, our demographers had projected around a 7%. And we are at 4.9 right now on enrollment. I'm sorry, 4.6. ADA, again, not quite as high as what was projected by the demographers, but you know, at the same time, you know, we kind of anticipated not quite as being as high, so we didn't budget for what the demographer said. And so, and we were, we were pretty fortunate on what we projected our budget enrollment to be this year. We're pretty much right on what we thought. So ADA is currently at 8023 and our what is at 10548. The numbers I'm giving you for projected are again demographer numbers. This is not necessarily what I'm going to budget on. Again, I believe it's just prudent to be a little conservative on those numbers. If we hit those numbers, great. That means more revenue coming our way. But so far, we just got our fourth quarter demographic report and they're projecting an enrollment of 9278. It's pretty good jobs, 8.5% from this year, but I know what they're doing. They see the houses going up. And that's a big driving force of their projections. That didn't quite equate to students in class this year. Because of, especially in the younger age groups, parents decided to just keep them home this year. And so the demographers are anticipating a pretty rosy vaccine rollout, pretty rosy summer, and maybe we could get everybody back. Obviously, that's our hope and we wish to do that, but we're not going to budget that way. We're going to budget a little more conservative and I'll show you that as we go. Any question on the enrollment trend? Okay. Go back one, I believe. Okay, no, I'm sorry. Next slide. Okay, same thing with property values. As y'all know, property values have increased quite a bit. You know, we, the district is in an envious position. We got student growth and we have property value growth. That's a really good combination for a school district. And I feel sorry, you know, for my CFOs and other districts that don't experience that, Austin especially, you know, they have higher property values, but they're losing enrollment. But this is, this is a great trend for Hutto. One thing that we always wish we had more as far as commercial development, but this year it's actually helping us in the fact that a lot of commercial properties are actually on the decline. The appraisal district told me that there's a slight decline in commercial value. A lot of that has to do with people working at home these days. And so office space is kind of, you know, glutton in the market. There's a lot of office space. Therefore, commercial property values are kind of starting to decline a little bit. Well, we don't have a lot of that, so. But as you may know, around here, Hutto homes are flying off the Realtor.com's as soon as they put on there. I mean, higher stories of people that sold their homes before the sign could get put out on the, on the grass. So residential values by the appraisal district are increasing over 10%. And again, that has a lot to do with a lot of the pasture land being turned into homes. So for our district, we're seeing quite a bit of a growth, and you can see it's pretty steady over since 1617. Again, these are projections. They won't be certified until July, actually. Those values won't be certified until after we adopt our budget. And once those are certified, then we will adopt the tax rate. I will tell you again, this is extremely preliminary, and the fact that if this value holds up, our MNO tax rate will be compressed again, and we're looking at right around 3 cents. But again, this is very preliminary, even that, that whole compression law could change if the legislature decides to do that. So anyway, if the values do go up another half a billion, then we're looking at another MNO tax cut.
You said this is super preliminary. Would you also say that these are conservative estimates?
Well, they're, they're in line with what the appraisal district is giving me. I, I don't, I don't take their things and go, nah, it's not. I usually take their word. As far as demographers, then I'll be, they're a little less scientific than, I mean, the appraisal districts are the ones actually doing it. And so whatever they tell me is what I use as far as values. All right. I mentioned with House Bill 3, there's compression on the MNO side. And plus, because of the values going up, we haven't had to have such a high tax rate on our MNO, I mean, on our debt service because of the values. However, again, to keep, just to show the trend for the last five years, that the tax rate has been decreasing ever since. All right, revenue and expenditure trends. Again, as we grow, as students grow, our expenditures grow. We need, our revenues grow and we need more teachers. We need more custodial staff as our footprint increases. As we open more schools, obviously, we have a cost per square foot of maintaining those buildings. So as, again, as the district grows, revenues grow and so do expenditures. As you can see, that revenues have exceeded expenditures since 1617, so our fund balance has been able to grow. Didn't put a couple asterisks on last, on last year because you see a dip in expenditures, but that's because this is 10 month. If it was 12 months, you can kind of see it's, it's in line with everything, but no, because of the change in fiscal year, we only recognize 10 months of expenditures. One thing I do point out here, and we'll get into it in a little bit, 2021 projected, we adopted an $84.4 million budget. I anticipate at this moment that we will realize those revenues. The shortfalls we did get in, in some of our attendance was made up by some of the COVID relief. So that was helpful. The reason the expenditures are showing low like that is because mainly of capital outlay. We budgeted about $3 million in capital outlay to take on some projects that are not going to get really, they've started. But by the time we pay architects and construction crews, it'll be in next fiscal year. So I don't anticipate that we will spend the capital outlay that we had budgeted for in this, this year. And also, as I was telling Dr. Thomas, COVID, school, school in the COVID era stinks. And also, as I was telling Dr. Thomas, COVID, school, school in the COVID era stinks. I mean, you can't think of anything worse, but I'll be honest with you, the COVID in school area is cheaper. It's cheaper to have school during COVID than without it because, again, student groups just aren't traveling. Teachers aren't traveling. There's a lot of costs that are cost savings because of the fact that we're literally restricted. I believe we have about 60% of our students in classroom. Then we don't need as much classroom supplies. So there's a lot of things that, again, reduce the cost. And so therefore, our expenditures are going to be a little bit lower than we budgeted. At least that's what I anticipate now, right now. We still have four months to go. But I anticipate it will increase our fund balance again. Next slide. And again, as I, as I just mentioned, we had a big, big increase last year because of the ten month. And a projection is that we'll increase the fund balance again roughly four million or so.
What's the 90-day amount that we're, the months that we should?
Ninety-day amount is right at, well, next year it will be right at twenty-one million, twenty-two million. We are really close to being at six month. Just under that because next year's budget will be right at ninety million and we have forty-two million. We're looking at forty-two million in reserve. All right, next slide. Okay, as far as general revenue fines for next year, you can look and see we adopted eighty-four point four this year. I project that we will, again, I don't expect it beyond the dollar, but we will, it looks like we will, we will generate the revenue that we anticipated. Projected revenues for next year, based on the growth and based on the new ADA that I'm factoring in, I'm factoring in a ninety million dollar budget next year, which is an increase of five point six million dollars.
Is that, I'm sorry Glenn, really quickly, is that based on the ADA that the demographer quotes? Or is that our conservative estimate?
The one I'm going to use, roughly about 10% of a growth. So two point seven million more in property taxes. Again, the MNO tax rate is really set by the state. It'll be a compressed rate. It'll be what we can legally adopt. And state revenue is again, based on this year's template. It's based on current law and the, in current allotments. I still need to check on my shards, but I'm estimating as far as MAC and shards reimbursements of two point one million, which is a little bit increasing this year. So again, anticipating about five point six million more in revenue next year. And it's predicated on both property values growth, which is here, and student growth, which is here. Okay, next slide. As expenditures, again, we have not had department budget meetings yet. This budget is really based on what the payroll study that was just performed. So really, the increases in here are really payroll and increases due to growth. Okay, and mainly open up the ninth grade center. So anticipate six point one million more in payroll, around two hundred and eighty-five thousand for contracted services, about three hundred and twenty-five thousand for supplies and materials, five hundred and fifteen thousand for other operating. We're, the debt services, I think, I mentioned to you before, we were in a five-year plan to pay off some servers. We were actually leasing some servers that were in our last year. So we will not have a debt service payment from the general fund. So that's a savings of about half a million. And then capital outlay, whatever we do not expend this year, we will budget into next year to finish the projects that we have started. And Henry estimates around two and a half million for capital outlay, which is about four hundred thousand less than what we had budgeted this year. So there are some savings in there. Again, these numbers will change once we have departmental meetings, once we get with all the principals of the department budget and get their request in. I don't have those yet. But again, based on this pay study that Tazby just presented, looking at the increase on the payroll has to do with both the pay increase for current employees and additional employees for growth. And what we'll go into at a later date, we'll get you into specifics as to the position growth.
For the, for what you were forecasting for the payroll increases, did you already assume one of those three options that were presented?
Yes, ma'am, that's three percent.
The three percent, okay, thank you.
The top recommendation.
You also mentioned new schooling expenditures. I'm assuming that's already accounted for all the new teachers.
Right, right. Yes, sir. Not, not only, again, we are basing, basing a certain amount of dollars for growth. Therefore, we're doing a certain amount of positions for growth as well. So we're looking at roughly six point three million additional expenditures. Again, this is very early. So then if you take the anticipated revenue and anticipated general fund expenditures right now as we stand on March the 11th, if you go to the next slide, we're looking at a seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar debt budget for next year. I feel that once we really kind of get into particulars and we can probably whittle that down. Again, my revenues are pretty conservative. I always do this. I always do the scariest scenario first. And then Dr. Thomas convinces me that we don't need to be quite so many. But I feel that this is a good starting point anyway. It's good to throw these numbers out and to look at, okay, where do we start and then where do we go from here?
So are the 2021, 2022, are these kind of like post-COVID, we're open for business?
And again, this is, I am budgeting based on all kids back in school. Because I can't budget the other way and then they all show up and then we're in trouble. This is 100% participation.
And at the March 25th meeting, we'll go, we'll go in depth, in depth with the expenditures, expenses for opening up the ninth grade center. So we'll have that broken down by, by people and by startup costs and all the other requests that are coming in. And right now, all of that's included in what you have here.
It's, yeah, it is. And it's a rough estimate right now, but it is included in this. There wouldn't be anything added later for that. Any questions on the preliminary, very early, very, very early?
Are we projecting any kids being homeschooled or at least for next year? In assuming that we are, what's our projection?
I don't know that we, I don't know that we can even project, Felix. We anticipate that happening. Especially if, if we have to return just to what was here the year before. They remove the option to have remote instruction, for virtual instruction. We anticipate families choosing either private instruction or homeschool instruction if they want to continue with, with the remote learning and we can't offer it. And we've tried to put some preliminary plans in place, but right now the outlook is not positive as far as remote instruction being an option that we, that we're going to have and be able to offer. We could offer it, but we can't afford to sacrifice the funding for it.
And I think the demographers are basically determined, are making projections based on no remote learning. So that's why I'm not going by their projection.
And being a legislative year, that's going to be discussed heavily.
It will be. There'll be a lot of discussions on that in funding for education. So.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
So between now and June, probably every two, every time we meet, we'll have a snippet. We'll, we'll have the budget on the agenda just so that we can continue to dive into what's going into those projections and, and building of the budget for June. So by the time we get to June, we'll, we'll be pretty clear on what we're adopting. We hope. Thank you, Glenn.
Okay, the next thing we have is draft of the communications plan. This is based off of the audit that we had done a few months ago. So Mr. Robison?
Yes, you probably need to do it there.
I think we're up since he's a co-host. I think you can, I think you can let him in. Well, this has been a fun process putting this all together. It actually has. It's one of those things that I think, you know, we, as a communications department, I think we've, and the audit showed, I think we do very well. But we all know, we can do very, or do much better or continue to improve. And especially, I think one of the things the audit showed was for us being a two-person communications department for a district our size, we're doing, we're doing pretty well. So, but here's, I'm going to go over some things that we want to do, initiate in the next, in the upcoming year, as well as just some things that we're doing right now. But before I do that, I want to, I have something funny I want to show you. So a lot of times we think that, you know, we think we're communicating. And we always, all of us think that we communicate and that people are listening to what we say. Of course, we know that's not always the case. Go to that folder, Robert, and open the one that says picture, my pictures. This top folder right here. And click on this one that says communications is important. I want to show you something that just happened today. Claudia Cardwell sent me this. So she got a check for HEF, right? So Claudia clearly goes out and she communicates to whoever she's trying to raise money from of what the purpose is, you know, for HEF. Well, clearly the person that she was communicating to wasn't really paying that much attention because when the check came, it said, raising money for something, donation to Hutto SD, raising money for something. So Claudia was like, okay, I said, I said, well, you should have sent him a message back and go, thanks so much, but where's the other thousand dollars that you committed? All that to say, we always think that we're communicating well. And sometimes in our communication, people aren't listening. They're not hearing what we say. Or maybe it's because we're not communicating as well as we think we are. So in our communications, one of our, one of the core beliefs in our, our district, what we believe statement is that we believe open two-way communication and transparency, are imperative for relationship-centered district. And obviously, we believe that and we try to communicate that way. Our goal is to promote community awareness of the district, address issues, encourage participation, increase community involvement. And then you see the different, the primary functions of the department. And these are the primary functions. Obviously, we have a lot of functions as the communications department. But general district communications, that's certainly, and updates, that's one, assisting campuses with communication, doing community outreach, marketing and branding. A lot of folks don't know that like some of our logos and all are, they're trademarked. So we're always trying to make sure our things are branded correctly. And when they're using our things that they're not supposed to be using, we try to bring that to their attention. Crisis communication, obviously, that's unfortunate that we have those, but sometimes we do. Student and staff recognition, election oversight, every one of you had to deal with, well, not you, or you, because y'all were elected before I was communications person, but all the rest of you at some point running for school board. Bond oversight, communication, public information requests, which are abundant. Obviously, media relations. So those are some of the things, our primary things that we do in terms of communication department. I want to just kind of walk through some of the things Cassie and I and Dr. Thomas are thinking for this next year, some new initiatives to try to help our communications improve. And this isn't an exhaustive list, but this is some things we've put down for now. And I want you to know, a communications plan is certainly a fluid document. This is not like, once, once this is done, it's not done. It's always going to change. There's always going to be new, new ways and ideas of how we can communicate better. First one is, I don't know if you're familiar with the Nextdoor app. Almost all of us live in a neighborhood that has Nextdoor. You know, I don't know if you subscribe to that or not. But one of the things, we actually started talking about this, I don't know, a couple of months ago. And we were talking with Lizzie about it as a way to, and Lizzie actually also was visiting with the rep for Nextdoor as a way to try to get more information out about community yet, to get it to people who maybe are not connected. And as we looked at it, you know, we all know one of our challenges is connecting with the unconnected, which is the folks in our community who don't have kids in their schools, who, you know, they're, they might be older, they might be younger, but they're just not connected. And that's hard. And every district, I, we talk about this with all of the communications directors in the region that I'm part of their group. And we all say, that's one of our biggest challenges, connecting with the community that's not connected to the schools. How do we get word out to them? So this one, I think, is, is one way to do that. Because there's a lot of folks in neighborhoods that are subscribed to the Nextdoor app, but they don't have kids in the schools. They, they have the app because of the neighborhood they live in. So we're going to give that a trial run. We can't subscribe, or we can't start it until July 1st, the next budget year, because they wouldn't prorate us for, at the end of this school year. So that'll launch July 1st. You're familiar with the Head Hippo Information Sessions that we started with Dr. Thomas. And Lisa was our first subject on, on that. It went really well. We have another one that we want to do, coming up probably right after spring break, where she wants to sit down and interview students. But we want to be creative and it's just another way of getting information out in a creative way. So that's, that's one of our initiatives for next year. District weekly staff newsletter. So y'all have no idea. But I get constantly staff sending me emails, hey, can you share this? Can you share this? Can you share this? And I think y'all are all, all on all staff emails now. So y'all see how many times I send emails out to all staff that are, hey, here's a, here's a discount to this, or here's a, this program, or don't forget about this, or, you know, anyway.
Selling T-shirts.
Selling T-shirts. I mean, it's just, and we want to, we want to get that information out, but it's overwhelming to, one, to have people constantly sending emails asking us to share it. But then me just bombarding people's emails with more emails that we all, you know, get tired of reading. So we're going to start a, a weekly staff newsletter. It's going to basically take all of those things and it's going to put them all into one email. So once a week, they're going to get an email that has all of those all-staff emails condensed into one. And then also, what we're probably going to do is a lot of departments now have started doing their own little newsletters. And we're going to take those and put links to those in that same thing. So again, we're going to relieve some pressure off of, off of email boxes. And then it's up to people, if they want to open that, they can pick and choose what they want to read. A quarterly flyer mailed, you know, again, really the only way, true way we know we can reach people in the community that are not connected with us is through mail. It's not through, it's not through social media. It's not through the website. It's not emails. It's through actual mail, physical mail that comes to your house, the old fashioned way. So I think one of the things we've talked about doing is we want to start doing like a quarterly flyer, if you will, probably a folded, or Community Impact will allow you to insert flyers into that. Everybody gets Community Impact. So, and I think a lot of people open Community Impact, Re-Community Impact. So we're thinking about doing a flyer quarterly that has, hey, here are important dates for the next three months. Here's things that are coming up. Here's some updates on bond projects or some other things like that that we can put in that flyer. And then we'll talk to Community Impact. We'll see what the cost is going to be. But if we can start having those go once a quarter in Community Impact, then we know those are going to hit everybody in our, in our community.
I think you'll find the Community Impact thought much more favorable expense-wise than mailing out.
So I think so too, Felix, because I actually talked to Slinne about that. I was like, she started, she wanted to do one like once a month. And I was like, that's going to be really expensive to mail out. Well, let's maybe look at the quarter. And yeah, I agree. I think it'll be a little more cost effective to. And, yeah, I, I agree. I think it'll be a little more cost-effective to do that, try to insert those into. And the good thing is, we give them to them, they stuff them, they mail them, it's out of our hands. We try to do that ourselves and we're trying to, you know, mail them, print them, mail them. It's, uh, that would be, we need another person.
Is that, with that, for the Community Impact, would anyone who gets that specific type of issue, which is like Round Rock, Flugerville, that all of those people will get it, or only the Hutto?
So I know, I know Community, Community Impact has changed how, where Hutto falls. Cuz it was Hutto, Round Rock, Flugerville, I think, and I think they've changed it. And I think we're now Hutto and Georgetown, maybe? I just saw something about that just a couple of months ago, they changed it. So I'm not positive, and I don't know if we can just specify, can you only insert these into the ones that get delivered to Hutto? Although, we need to also be able to touch the Round Rock addresses that are in our ISD.
I think that's a, a nice way to kind of expand our sphere.
Yeah.
Of information.
To even beyond.
The families that might be looking for a school just like Hutto.
Correct. And so we'll see, I, I, we'll find out what the cost is to have those inserted. And I'll tell you, inserting those in is gonna be a whole lot cheaper than buying an add-in Community Impact 2, or expensive.
I just like the fact for the quarterly. If those, those tech, like you said, they don't have kids. Also lets them know and transparency and hopefully some, some positive responses like, hey, you know, my money's going to a good place. And at the end of the day, I want a good school district where I have, regardless of have kids or not, so.
Yeah, and, and, and I will be honest, I don't know exactly what this is gonna look like. Have on it, how much room we have, you know? We don't wanna be, make it too, Community Impact is already, there's a lot to read. So we don't want that to be something that somebody's gonna go, that's a lot of stuff. And, you know, so we want it to be pretty simple. But we'll, Cassie's good, so we'll come up with something really.
Any option to possibly maybe even do the Hutto Living?
Well, Hutto Living doesn't deliver the entire Hutto. Now, I know when they started last year, they were only delivering to like four subdivisions, I think. I don't know if they've expanded that or not.
They're expanding next month.
Are they?
Well, they're supposed to be adding several new neighborhoods.
But I think it's still not gonna be the entire community. So we might check with them in a couple of years, whenever, if we see that they're actually getting full coverage in the community.
They're getting really popular.
Oh, yeah.
They are.
Especially when you came on that.
People on the cover, right? Zero is this company?
Safel.
Yeah. The rest of us in here, you know. Alright, here's another one, and this kinda goes along with that district weekly staff newsletter. So, again, we get bombarded with staff. And, and they're, they're well-intentioned, it's nothing bad, but, hey, can you share this? Can you share this? Can you share this tomorrow? Can you, you know, so they don't give us a lot of updates. So we've created, or we are creating a request for publicity form for teachers, other staff, that if you want something shared, if you want us to, not only in this district weekly staff newsletter, but maybe you've got, maybe you have some really cool project going on in your classroom and you want coverage of it. We'll fill out this request for publicity form, send us the details, some information, because we don't know what we don't know. And as Hutto has gotten bigger, obviously, with 11 schools, unless someone at a school tells us, then we don't know. So they have to give us the information that we need to cover for them. So that's gonna help us plan a little bit better in terms of our coverage of campus events and other achievements. Another thing, so we tried about a, two years ago, I guess, we tried having that, a little hippo gear store on our website, and it was a major fail. Partly because we probably just, we, we didn't pick the right person for, for running it for us. Now that we are gonna have a store at the stadium when it's finished, we want to, you know, we wanna be a part of helping choose the merchandise and, and design and all of that. But we also, we hope, are gonna have some type of online presence that goes with that store, that'll be on our website.
The only thing with the store, we all coordinate with some of the organizations cuz I know they depend on certain fundraisers and have certain.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna, I don't think the store's gonna intrude on those. It's gonna be like, you know, right now, you can go buy hippo gear at
Walmart.
Walmart or CBS or, you know, a number of other places. And, you know, the organizations are still doing their things. And I think we're not gonna, we're not gonna try to interfere with that. I think we just need a place, as Hutto gets bigger, people come in town, they're like, hey, where can I get a cool Hutto shirt? Where can I get, and we don't have the trailer at the stadium anymore like we used to, we don't have.
Does Flugerville have a store, or Liberty Hill? There's somebody around here who has that concept.
I don't know, they might. You know, I don't, those, those of us that have been around a long time, we remember when we used to have the, what was it, Everything Hippo? Or whatever it was called, you know? You could go get shirts and all kinds of stuff. And there's just, we don't have that anymore. So we need to have that and we need to own that. And we need to benefit from that, right? So.
Hey Todd, just suggestion, I don't know whether this is possible or not. In the, in the faith of just trying to save every dollar that we can and not spend it just on, on mailers, is there a chance that maybe a business can sponsor that mailer? And you guys insert it, that way we, as the school district, save that.
Like on the flyer?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Felix. Let me, sure. Do you wanna sponsor the first one?
Know when it's ready.
That's a great idea. I just made a note. Thank you. Marketing promotion at the stadium, so, you know, one of the things we've talked, and this is all preliminary right now, right? But, you know, we've talked about when that stadium, as that stadium's built, we're gonna have an area in that plaza that's gonna have brick, people can do personalized brick pavers, they can do memorial plaques, things like that. And somebody's gonna have to help oversee that. And I have a feeling that's gonna fall under the communications department. And hopefully, we'll have a designated person, a marketing type of person who does that. But, but we will be involved in that as well, helping, you know, design what those look like, what they're, how we're gonna sell them, how we're gonna promote them. And then another one, and I know some of you have heard this, but H E F, we're gonna, we're gonna work with H E F in trying to help get an alumni relations group started. I think H E F will benefit the most from that, of course, as they reach out to, to former grads to try to get them to give back and, hey, look what's going on in Hutto. But we, as the community, communications department, can certainly help with that because as we get those name addresses, we can share with them, here's the awesome things that are happening in your former, where you went to school. And you'll, you know, it's, it's really interesting, when the, when we posted the video of the stadium rendition and some of the people that commented were people that used to live here. And they were like, oh my gosh, that's, that's my hometown, that's where I went to school. And it's like completely different than it was when I was here. But I think the alumni relations thing, we've reached that point now. I think Hutto's reached that point that we can really, we can benefit from reaching out to, to our alumni. I'm not gonna go through this whole 14 pages, but right below that is some of the things we do in terms of planning or we are going to do, be more intentional about, Cassie and I meet each Monday morning, or we will be more intentional about meeting each Monday morning to review what the current communication needs are, not only for the coming week, but the, the following week. So we're always looking kinda two weeks out and planning for our communications. And of course, we all know things come up unexpectedly all the time that we can't plan for. We also monthly will be reviewing the website. That's a, that's hard. It's hard to keep a website up to date, especially one that has as many pages and rabbit trails as ours does. Already, I meet bi-weekly with the communications department, just to be sure that, that Tracy up here in the front and that Lizzie is community ed, Claudia is H E F, that everyone's kind of in tune with what we're doing. Of course, I meet daily, multiple times almost, with, with Selena, just to talk about communication needs. And then meeting with Lizzie or helping Lizzie promote community. She's doing a great job, but we all kinda, we're better together and we will continue to help promote that. On the next page, that's just where you can click to link or view the audit. I know you've seen it before, but if you need to review the audit at some point. And then there's a list of what our, our communication priorities are. And then our audience, which is, you know, our audience is three. It's internal audience, which is our, our staff, you guys, this school board. Our external audience, which is, that list is, probably missed somebody in trying to list all of our external audience. And then there's what I call the extended internal audience. And that's our parents and our students, organizations, volunteers, alumni, there's no. So our audience is broad and very specific at different times for different communications. Our different communications channels, of course, we all know what those are and they continue growing. Under social media, you'll see I put the Nextdoor app and then I put the next big thing. Because who knows, we all think that we finally have reached the end and there can't possibly be another social media channel. And sure enough, there is. Texting, let me talk to you quickly about texting. So a few years ago, and it was before I started, the district had made the decision not to send text messages. And it was because, we all can remember, and it wasn't all that long ago, when texting wasn't always free. You know, you got charged by the texts. And so the district made the decision, we're not gonna text because we don't want people to get charged for texts. And it kinda just stayed that way. We haven't sent text messages much. So we started looking at it and we wanna start doing text messages, but we can't, we can't do that until this next round of registration. And because, the reason for that, about two years ago, the law changed. And you actually have to have very specific permission to send people texts. And you, you can't just say, okay, they gave us permission, we can send them a text. They actually have to specify a cell phone number. And it can't just be their cell phone number on a number, on a line that says phone. It actually has to say cellphone, right? It has to specify cellphone. Well, our registration, the way it's set up right now, when people go to register, it, I think the first question is phone number. Well, most of us, I don't know how many of you have a landline, but I don't, and I think a lot of people don't. So most people put their cell phone number under phone. Well, then there's a line for cellphone, but a lot of them don't even fill that out because they've already written their cell phone number, right? We can't use that number that says phone, even though that's their cellphone. We cannot text because they didn't put it where it says cellphone. And they also didn't opt in to, to receive texts. So this next, we've already been meeting with some Roberts folks about registration. And this next year, cellphone will be the very top thing. They will automatically be opted in to receiving texts, but there will be somewhere on there that'll let them know that they can stop, they can stop, you know, text to this number to stop, or if they receive a text, they can stop. So it's gonna be, at that point, it'll be pretty much automatic. But we have to just kinda clear that and start all over again. Otherwise, we'll, now, one caveat to that, if there's ever an emergency, even if someone has said, don't text me, if it's what's considered an emergency situation, we can, we can still.
Override them.
We can override there. Do not text.
But this was important to emphasize in this plan because it was a major ask from the parent, from the parent groups that they, they, they wanted the option to receive text messages.
Yeah, and I think it's funny because, you know, I think part of also the, the thought a few years ago of not texting was people were just getting blown up with text messages all the time. And we didn't wanna just be another one of those, but it sounds like that's what people want, so we will give them what they want. You can look through that list of just our different electronic communication, electronic channels of communication. Whole page on social media, how we deal with social media. You see at the bottom of that, one of the things we don't do regularly, but we just do it every so often, but we're gonna start doing it regularly, meaning monthly, is running analytics on our social media. You know, what's, what's being effective on Facebook, what's effective on Twitter, what's effective on Instagram? And which posts have the highest engagement? And maybe start figuring out, okay, why, why did that one, why was that one better than another one? And so that'll help us as we, as we do analytics.
I had a, a note on this one, on this page. I noticed at the top, it said, we take care not to overpost so that they don't drop down too quickly. So I just wanted to kinda make sure that we weren't being too reserved. And so I looked at some of the other districts around us and how many posts they had done just in the last week, just to kinda gauge where we were. And I noticed that like Flugerville, Round Rock, Austin, I see Taylor, we're all like 15 to 19 posts in a week and we had one. So I'm just wondering if we can try to do more to be more active.
I think, certainly can. I think it, it also depends on what's going on, right? Sometimes if there's not. It, it just depends on the week, the time of the year, but yes, I hear what you're saying.
I just wanna do a litmus test and just kind of like how engaged they are.
Yeah.
I'm just.
I would tell you 15 or 19, 19, that's a lot. That's, that's too.
I was surprised too. Like, I went back and counted, I went to every district's Facebook pages cuz I, I felt like, you know, a lot of parents are in that average range of Facebook users. And so it seems like they're there a lot. And if, if we're not posting regularly or active, people stop going there. And so, you know, I just wanna make sure that we're, you know, being active on Facebook.
I think what we worry about is if we're putting a very important information out there, right? And something, and we can pin it.
Yeah.
And we do, but sometimes you have two of them or, you know? And so as soon as you put another one on, it starts dropping down and then people don't see them. You know how it is with Facebook, I mean, things just move down fast. So, but yeah, I, I totally understand what you're saying. I think 19 is too many.
Yeah, that was Austin and Leander had 19, Taylor and Flugerville had 15 in last week, so maybe you'll remember.
Those are.
Even with those.
But that's still.
Round Rock was 18.
15 is still three a day, which is, I think that's too many, but.
Well, it probably keeps the analytics going, I'm sorry. The more, something in between, because the more often I see Hutto posts, the more likely they are to come back into my feed. So, sorry, Billy.
Well, I was just, I'm gonna say first, when is your first TikTok video, Todd?
Hey, that's the news for kids nowadays.
He's got plans, apparently.
I, I, no, I have an account, but only because I have never moved on TikTok, never will.
What I was gonna say is, and I'm assuming that there's gonna be more to this plan coming up, but kind of to Sheris' point, I wonder if, you know, like, if you guys decide what it is that is, we want to communicate. For example, and I, I wrote this note down and you may still getting to it, like, you know, what does our district decide we want to post on Facebook, like state recognitions? And I think one of your, at the top, you said one of your main things was student recognition. So I don't know what those districts are posting, but, you know, like, do we post state recognitions on? What are we using Facebook for? Important information to share, recognitions, staff spotlight, whatever? I'm, I'm assuming that that's what you guys are gonna decide as part of your plan?
Yes, for sure. And I will say too, we, not all school districts, some school districts have just one Facebook page. And they use that to post for all of their campuses. We, a couple of years ago, decided to give all of our campuses their individual Facebook pages because we said, we can't, we can't just continually post stuff from every campus on the district Facebook page. Because again, then it becomes posting and things get lost. So we definitely want the campuses to use their pages. Because obviously, their, you know, their people, the people, the, the parents of that school, they're gonna be really interested in what their kids are doing, you know?
So then what is it that we want to communicate or get out as a district as a whole? That's what would go on the district Facebook, correct?
Yeah, and, and no matter what we decide, it's not gonna. And, and no matter what we decide, it's not going to be, it's not going to be right, right? Because we'll, we might decide we're posting this and then we'll hear somebody complain that you're not posting this, or, you know, so.
Like, also, again, this may be a little further down, sorry if I'm jumping ahead, but I've heard it before too, like, some sports have their own accounts, Twitter accounts or Facebook accounts or whatever, and they're good about putting it out there. And then other sports maybe aren't necessarily. So then people are like, well, why don't you post ever about, you know? So are you defining that in here, like approaches? You need to set up your own?
So, and that's a great example. So, so athletics has their own Facebook page that they post everything. I've been told before, we post too many athletic things on the district page. I looked back and then from last November through, like November of 19 through December of 20, I think I had, there were five posts that were related to athletics on the district Facebook page, so in one year. And three of those, I think, were like students signing, like covering the kids signing scholarships. Like, I don't think any of them were related to like a game, other than unless there was something special, like when we did that, like the El Paso Strong thing or whatever. So, we do not put athletics on our district page, they have their page for that.
And so maybe, maybe, like from their department, they determine?
They do.
Individual sports and?
They do. I mean, that's really the athletic director's job too. And he does, Brad does a good job of trying to put all the sports on there.
But if, if you're not, you know, a Facebook person, then it's hard to remember to get that stuff on there.
No, I know, but, and that's hard because that's not our, my job is not to cover all the athletics, put it all on the athletic page, right? I can't do that, just like I can't put all the different schools' stuff on their pages.
So I think, I think this is a great conversation. I love that it's being recorded because I feel like one of the unintended consequences for having all of these different, every group has their own one, every campus, sometimes campus have multiple ones depending on the student groups. I think sometimes the, the, the misperception is, these groups have to start, start these pages themselves, because had it not been for that, there wouldn't be coverage. I don't think the community understands the rationale behind all of these different pages so that if I'm like a, I don't know, if I am in like Ballet for Clorico and that's the kind of stuff that I want to see, I can opt into that. And so, I love that this is becoming a lot more refined and articulated so that the community understands that no one is intentionally being left out, this is just how we can streamline communication.
Yeah, I mean, we're a big district now. We're not, we're not little hutto, that it's easy to just put everything on, on one page. And as, you know, as we grow and there's so many organizations doing their things, yeah, I mean, if we tried to do all of that, then we would have 30 posts in a week, not just 15 or 19, so, yeah.
So speaking of being not a little district anymore, and you said that one of your, your primary functions is student recognition and staff recognition, sometimes we spend over an hour in our board meetings with that, right? So, so is that something like, maybe you guys just refine the student and staff recognition so you're communicating that and, and that helps us? Like, I mean, as we grow, I guess what I'm saying is, we get, continue to get more campuses, we could be here for two hours talking about, which, it, it's one of my favorite things, but let's face it, I mean, as we continue to grow.
Well, it's not fair to the kids that are being recognized because it's such a, I don't think they're getting as much of that spotlight because they're sitting in a, like waiting room with hundreds of people, it's, it's different, so.
They're having to wait a long time sometimes too. The kids themselves have to wait a long time sometimes on that call.
On the call or when they're in person.
Yeah, even when, here in this room is packed from.
So I feel like that's yalls or dolls, that's not a communication. I don't have any, I just try to.
Well, in my mind.
Try to put those people out.
If it doesn't happen here, it's going to happen there.
Yeah, it should happen in your communications world.
I, I, I do have a couple of ideas, but, yes, it, it is taking a, a long, a long time, so, and we want to spotlight the kids and we want to recognize them appropriately, but I think, I think we can do it in a more efficient way without taking away from the honor and the spotlight. So we'll look at that. But I do, this is, this is an important topic, because we give, obviously, access to all of our groups, right? To create, to create the websites and we give them a place to live on the district website. And some groups do a better job than others. And so, and because we only have one high school, when you get to the National Merit Scholars or things of that nature, you want to spotlight that. And it doesn't mean that we're not paying attention to the elementaries or the middle schools, we have one high school, we have one flagship. And, and they are, just by default, they're going to get the most, more attention than the others, doesn't mean it's more important.
Right. Can I, can I share a suggestion? I think you're, we as a district are at a point where we need to consider, because everything you're talking about there is a work activity.
Yes.
You need a message, you need to focus on the messaging and the campaign, not the, not the work activities. If we had a vendor, there's a lot of them out there, Asher Media, Till, there's all kinds of vendors out there that are really, really good at this, on an enterprise-wide level. And they can manage your campaigns, your web specialists, they can do videography, they can do campaigns, they can do texts, it's automated, it's tiered, it's scheduled, it's feedback to the director of communications that focuses on the messaging. It would be far less expensive than hiring a videographer, a web specialist, a person to focus on all the work activities, and it would allow you, along with the superintendent, to focus on the messaging. Because what we all know is that in the absence of information, people will create their own narrative, right? So if we could have, if we could have a coach and a vendor through our normal process that we identify, that can automate and manage with our branding standards in place, the, the messaging, whether it's text, I mean, it's, these things are turnkey, text, and it's totally transparent to the consumer. It feels and looks like it's being managed by Hedo ISD. And it is, because you, you're, you're the ma, you're the, you're the one that has the master key of all of that. But you could probably get a fairly, really well-run campaign annually for what it would cost you to hire two FTEs to cover one of the 10 work activities that you talked about, right? So it, it's, that's worth consideration. And there's, again, there's a lot of companies that do that and do it really, really well. I'm sure some of your colleagues might utilize them. And here's how you know they're doing it really, really well. Whenever you go to a district and you go, man, how do they do all this? They're using a vendor, I guarantee you. That's how they do it. Because unless.
Some of them have bigger departments.
Unless you have an army of people that are doing that every day and you have the money to pay for an army of people that are doing it every day, there's, there's just no way. I mean, I'm talking about people that do campaigns on TikTok, Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, text campaigns, crisis response campaigns, you know, certain demographics in the community. I mean, it's very, very impactful quality messaging for a vendor fee. And don't get me wrong, it's not cheap.
It's not cheap.
Okay, I, it's, it'd be probably $120,000 a year, $140,000 a year. But, but my, my insane that is, we can either go that direction or we can fight and try to figure out which one of these is our priority and maybe sprinkle an FTE here or there and try to cover it and kill yourself. Or we could, because we're growing, take advantage of the economies of scale that a third party can provide us and just hire it out.
Is that what y'all do at TSC?
Partially.
Who's, who's one of the ones you mentioned?
Asher Media.
Asher.
Is one of the ones that, that we use.
What we would do in a case like that is put out a request.
Yeah, you would put out a.
A request.
Oh no, I just wanted a name to be able to go.
But you can, I mean, you can literally Google, I mean, there's all kinds of companies that are out there that will help you, that are really, really good at it.
Yeah.
And you would never know that it's a vendor doing that work.
And, and I think that's what you're finding is, as you actually put all of this paper, I mean, print to paper and looked at the priorities, looked at the audit and, and all the things that we want to accomplish as a district, all the things that, that, that Todd and Cassie want to do as a communications department, it is, it's, it's overwhelming.
And I mean, I'm talking about.
Things are needed.
But, you know, if you guys, if you guys are, are, I'm talking about the level of coordination where if Henry and Dr. Thomas and there's a few other people are walking the ninth grade center, they know they're going to be there that day and they're going to send out a guy with a drone.
Right.
And they're going to, they're going to film B-roll and they're going to bring it back and cut it to you and say, give me a voiceover and we're done.
Right.
And now you got a piece, right? So you got a piece on the, on the progress of the ninth grade center. So, so can you imagine how much work that would cost you and Cassie? So it's just, just, just an idea. I think it's worth it. Because we'll never get to the point, if we're trying to hire FTEs, we'll never get to the point that it makes financial sense for us to do that in that department, until we get to Fort Ben level.
Level, yeah.
You know, something like that.
I, I actually, I, I sent a message out to our group a couple of days ago and said, hey, I'm just curious, how many of you, tell me how many people you have in your department that do, not, not counting admin, not counting, you know, education foundation or whatever, but that just do what we do? And, yeah, a lot of them have a lot of people.
Yeah, a lot. It takes a lot of people to do that.
You know, this conversation leads me to the question about, is there a monitor that's handling every Facebook, every location that Benson from putting stuff out that might not be ideal?
I mean, we, we.
Yeah, it's the heck of people. If somebody puts something out, somebody's going to.
Yeah, I will say, Billy's right, people do a pretty good job of, of policing themselves and calling somebody out if they're, but, no, we, if, if, especially if it's something that I know is going to be, you know.
Like the mask thing.
Create some, some stuff, we try to keep a closer eye. And we'll, we, you know, you probably don't know it because, because it doesn't show up on your end, but we'll go in and hide people's comments if they're inappropriate. We try not to delete them because we want to save them, be able to save them in case we ever need to bring those back up, but, but we'll hide comments. I don't know if you even, if y'all saw, but even the one about the masks, at the end, I put, this is not the forum to debate whether masks are, you know, the merits of masks.
And yet, a debate.
Of course.
Yeah.
But a lot of people called people out saying, did y'all not read the last line that said, this is not the place to debate that?
But I do appreciate how you also include the expectations of like, what is acceptable on, on district social media, how you outline all of that.
And that's all on our page, that's on our Facebook page already. Doesn't mean people pay attention to it, but it gives us at least the ability to go in and, you know.
But upfront, you're showing people what the expectations are, so it doesn't seem like, oh, I disagree with your ideas, you're going to hide it or delete it, like violates our, yeah, community regulations or whatever.
There's one poster, y'all, y'all know him because you get emails from him, that goes and puts stuff on every single thing, and I usually hide his comments and he's that close to being banned.
Tans, did you have something?
Yeah, just, I mean, I like Edgar's point about staffing, because it's one thing I didn't see in the report, if you were, if your staff was, your department was fully staffed to do all these things that you.
That's next, that's the next meeting.
Yeah. So, and as far as, you know, elementary schools' content is going to be different from middle and a flagship high school. On each campus, is there a designated person who's supposed to be monitoring and creating that content? Is there a stipend for that person who's, okay, all right, yeah.
You know, Todd, I use a company called AMM out of Florida and they meet with me once a month and we discuss everything that we want to be able to create and then they handle all of it. And then Morgan asks me, I got, you told me a month and a half ago, wow, you have a lot of nice content in there. I don't do any of it, I just kind of.
Just like Edgar just said.
Yeah. I approve what they, what I want to do and then they handle all of it. It just takes a lot of things away from me that allows me to do what I need to do.
I mean, if, if.
Can't clean.
Oh. So now we can say, yeah, if Money Guy said yes, I'd be like, let's.
But you know what, there's a parameter, a company that's going to charge you 120, 150, 50, and you can find really good in between. So it's just a matter of finding the right one.
No, it's like.
The cool thing about those companies is, they, they can show you, you know, they can show you the, I think they call it penetration rates or whatever, they can show you the, the costs for every single campaign, they can even brand certain campaigns, like if you wanted to launch a campaign on bond dollars, every, I'm going to send out bond dollar video message or whatever, demonstrating the progress on that, those campaigns eventually become a brand in and of their own and people follow that, right? They'll follow that hashtag or that brand because they're interested in that particular topic.
Right.
They'll go down that rabbit hole. So it'll be bond or it can be student recognition or it can be whatever. And it, it's certainly worth exploring that then.
Definitely will, thanks.
Good idea.
Permission on that.
This is a great, you could tell you put a lot of thought and work into this plan, Todd, for the first time, just creating it out of the.
Well, thank you. I, I think, and understandably so, I don't think anybody realizes how busy we stay and how, you know, kind of comes our way and, but I, I'm proud of what we do with basically two people in a communications department. I'm, I'm proud. And, and a lot of that credit goes to Cassie. Cassie is amazing, the stuff that she helps with in design and, yeah, I would, I would flounder greatly without her.
So, I also really appreciate how you all have like planned out for the year, what are those things that you are going to intentionally recognize with the celebrations and appreciation days? I, I think that's a great, a great thing, because then you already know, like in September, here are the things that we need to make sure we have content for, here are the ways that we can connect with schools to showcase those things, so I appreciate.
Now you have something to point back to, to say, you didn't just make this up to, you know, yesterday, you said you were going to talk about this and you did.
And we've, and, and all honesty and fairness, we've always had those. I mean, we have Document, Google Box and all that that we use, it's just never been in this form. But, you know, we have kind of a list of, okay, this is, you know, teacher, celebrate teacher with month or, you know, so, but yes, I would be surprised how many things, literally, there could be something every single day. There's a book that has.
National.
National.
Hot Day.
National Hot Dog Day or whatever.
Todd, I can't believe you forgot National Hippo Day. That's February 5th.
But remember, it says drafts, ma'am, it says draft.
I know.
Yeah, I did post on that particular day. Unfortunately, it was one of our.
A snow day.
Day. Have electricity and all.
I know, it was the snow day.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions or?
Good work, Todd, this is really good. Thank you, yeah, there's a lot more stuff, obviously, you can look through it and. Don't ever hesitate to send me, okay, so I have one last thing. So again, so we, we think we communicate and we think people are getting the message and all that. So let me ask you a question. Does anybody know anything significant about the circle in front of high school?
Uh, I do.
Hang on.
I've seen it before in my life until I watched that video.
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay, so don't say anything yet, does anybody else know?
Um.
No? I, okay, until.
Did you do that?
No, I had no idea. And I have asked so many people that live, lived here for a long time.
Yes.
Had no clue. People that like have been at that high school thousands of times.
Thousands of years.
Yes. Go back to my little folder, it says, y'all.
I've been here since 2000.
Here's the deal, see? Somebody did that because, hey, this is going to be a cool thing, this is going to be a cool message, people are going to see it, and they don't. The message, the message got lost. Did y'all know that in front of the high school, the circle? The circle, all the concrete is in the shape of the, the state of Texas and that next to the big hippo, the bricks form an H? Do you know that?
Nope. Yeah, when James Maloff made the video.
So this is awesome.
I know. Wait, yeah, we were watching. Architects know that they did that? Like, they missed that when we were.
None of us know. The message was lost, right? I mean, it was, it's cool when they did it, but it's like.
I think that's, that's an example of, sometimes we miss potential messaging.
Yes.
The whole time.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so in the audit, one of the things that, that Brad said we should do every once in a while is fun stuff like, did you know?
Did you know?
This is gonna be my first, did you know? I mean, I have to give permission from James to use his.
Cause nobody in the district knew that that was there.
No. Crazy.
Did Chris know it was there?
He, he did, cause he's the only person I've talked to that knew, but he said only because there's pictures like of the school, personal overhead shots or whatever. I still haven't driven over there to verify.
That's funny.
Thank you all.
Okay, next, Ms. Patterson. If you guys remember, a couple of months ago, we said that we would come back in March and information about how to handle the hiring authority for the superintendent. So because we said we would bring that back in March, here it is.
Said we would.
Yep.
Yes, so the policy revisions is right there and we did take a look at the request. So our request to the board tonight is to delegate to the superintendent final hiring authority to contract positions below principalship. So basically teachers, counselors, any positions that would impact instruction immediately. And our objective for that, our reason for asking is it was going to increase our efficiency for bringing people on board. And so all, all, all others outside of that will come back to the board. So the only thing of interest that I wanted to let you know about the research with that is that Dr. Thomas will now have the same responsibility, if this is approved at the March 15th board meeting, she would also have the same responsibility to nepotism as you all have as a public official and you will maintain that responsibility as well. So she'll have limited, she'll have the nepotism responsibility as well. That was the biggest takeaway from this policy research. But we.
Actually, it was a reason back whenever that was adopted.
Well, and I checked on that as well. And so we've always had the TASB recommended version since 2002. I was concerned that maybe we had made those revisions ourselves locally and we had not made those revisions. So basically we vetted it through our legal counsel. They had no concerns with it. TASB's policy consultants are much more conservative. So they did caution us about the potential liability to the district with releasing final hiring authority to the superintendent. We're not concerned with that because we do have a very robust vetting process and human resources. So there's do not call registries, there's many, many different gatekeeping methods to eliminate us bringing on someone that's a threat to the district. So over time, that process has really been locked down. We feel really good about that. So the request is to grant to the superintendent final hiring authorities to contract positions below the level of principal.
Okay. And, and so if you guys have discussion, just keep in mind, this meeting, this second meeting, on Thursday meeting is for information like this and then we'll take action on anything at the fourth Thursday meeting. And so we've already given her this authority through March, so this would just be moving forward.
In perpetuity.
Yes.
Any questions about the revisions, the recommended revision?
Did you find that this was kind of like an area trend for larger districts?
For larger districts, yes. There are a number of larger districts that do this.
And it really has helped the last couple of months. It really has helped.
Yes.
Put needed people in their positions.
Moving on, something quickly.
Yes.
We want to try to eliminate any roadblocks from us, for us in recruiting and retaining those positions. So that's basically our objective efficiency and to bring them on as quickly as we can.
But these are all positions that have already been approved, FTEs?
Well, ongoing, yes.
Yes.
That we've approved positions, any approved positions.
So we would still approve.
We'll still approve anything principal and above.
Right, right.
At that level, principals and those kinds of things, you'd still approve those. And I think this will be great and it will definitely increase our effectiveness and speed in human resources.
Makes sense.
What we want.
This also addresses, like if we have employees who have been offered promotions or things in, in other neighboring districts, it allows us to fill them more quickly to release that person who's ready to move on.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Awesome.
So like I said, the only, the only bit of concern was the nepotism rule. So Dr. Thomas, you can't, you wouldn't be able to hire your husband.
Oh, God. I would.
Would he work for you anyway?
No, at one time I did try to convince him to consider bus driving. He says, do you want to keep your job?
Thank you, Lisa, for researching that for us.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so now.
So at the March board meeting, you'll see this item in the consent agenda.
Good point.
Okay, yeah.
Up next is the mask policy discussion. We talked, this was talked about at the table talk, if you got to attend that, but just to bring this up to, to make sure vocally, we're all on the same page about where we're going with this.
So Dr. Sermon, yeah, and, and this is very short. It's only, it's only two slides. So in the, in your board packet, you have the whole document of the public health guidance, the latest copy from Commissioner Marath. And so I wanted an opportunity to discuss the governor's order, obviously, and its effect on this public guidance. So essentially Commissioner Marath met with all the, well, he did his statewide call like he normally does last week and reminded us that the governor's order had no effect on the public health guidance or any change in the mask policy. However, if you, can you go to the next slide? The, a governing board has the option to modify or eliminate by formal action the above mandated requirements. So I didn't want to go through the entire policy because this mask policy is in our safety plan. I met with, well, we met as an executive team. We sat down with Kendra as well. She sat down in turn with Williamson County Public Health officials, the epidemiologists that she normally works with. And of course, they were dead, said we are, they did not, obviously they know that we have the option of modifying or eliminating the mask policy. They did not recommend it. Can you go to the next slide? Thank you. And so, once again, their recommendation was that we remain, remain with the current policy. And again, the why behind it, infection rates are still high. I think this, this order gives us, gives that impression that the pandemic is ending and it is really, we're not near that, that, that point. Infection rates are looking great, even here at a district level. I think if you remember, late January, early February, those infection rates were up at 55, 56, I think was the highest we got per 100,000. The latest data point that we have is 15.6 per 100,000. But remember that the goal is one. When we were looking at, at those data points for closure, if y'all remember from early fall, the goal, the infection rate goal was one. So we still have a way to go. As far as vaccines, less than 20% of the people in the county are vaccinated. That, again, that data point was as of early this week. Now they're really ramping up. I get my vaccine tomorrow. I actually got an email for an appointment and so I'm actually volunteering, Joe DeLeon and I are volunteering tomorrow afternoon with a vaccine to Del Diamond. And so I signed up for an appointment right before that. But nonetheless, I'm sharing something personal here. Back to the mask policies decision, less than 20% vaccination rate. And of course, the science behind it is that even though we're going to be vaccinated, you can still transmit the disease, you can still contract COVID and you can still pass it on. So if you're not wearing your mask, you could inadvertently infect children or have the children take it home to other adults in the home. Where, where, there's still, the research out, the, the research is still too new to indicate that the vaccine has really long-term effects beyond three months right now is what they're telling us. So for right now, the, the masks remain and all the other mitigation practices remain our best form of protection. Now, unlike other school districts, we did not, we did not survey our parents and we did not survey our teachers. Because I, when it comes to safety, this is not something you survey people on, you're, you're basing the decision on working with your public health officials who know the science behind the disease. So this is not about asking someone's opinion whether they believe in masks or not. So if you get, if there's a question, why didn't Hutto ISD survey teachers or parents about their stance on the mask policy? For us, this is a matter of safety, not a matter of public opinion on whether they believe COVID is real or whether masks do function work or not. So that's our position as a district. As a, as a board, obviously you have the ability to direct me to modify the mask policy. I, along with the executive team, don't, wouldn't, don't recommend that. But however, we're here to work together and so we're open to your opinions and your concerns and comments as well.
I don't, I mean, I agree with you on the mask and I know that the governor is technically wanting to open up the state. Where are we on the policies of just attending events and campuses and are we still to 25%, 50%?
So with the, with athletic events, we have increased capacity to 50%, okay? And we're gonna look at it again. So this is what we told ourselves, we're gonna increase capacity to 50% and then we're gonna wait till after spring break and wait for the two weeks, just in case there's a surge or there's an uptick in cases. So we're gonna wait the two weeks and then that Monday, April 5th, we're gonna come back together and take a look at what's happened with infection rates. If things are going well, then we'll increase the capacity once again for the remainder of the seasons.
What indoor sports are happening right now, like powerlifting and wrestling?
So I was gonna say clarification, that's 50% outside.
Yes. Thank you. Yes.
The only thing we have inside left is wrestling. And we decided, I think, if he has, because he usually has four teams and I think we decided 50 tickets per team because the boys, there are boys and girls, because they're wrestling, there's usually a lot of them and they tend to kind of spread out in the stands too. So we said, basically take the, take the stands and put them into quarters, right? Half quarter, two quarters on one side, two quarters on the other. Each team gets like a quarter of the stands and their boys and their fans can sit in that quarter and then the other quarter, kind of the same. Does that make sense?
Yeah. But as far as the other performances, Ms. Rowens, we do plan to allow the kids, the, the performing groups, like the band to have an end of the year concert. I think the dance team, the middle school dance teams want to have some performances. And the way we're gonna treat those is treat them like an athletic event and look at whatever percent capacity we're at for that particular time. So for right now, it would be 50% capacity with social distancing and all the other mitigation guidelines in place. So you would, you as board members obviously have the ability to attend those functions and we'll let you know when those are taking place.
If we get a ticket for it.
Yes, you would have to get, you would have to get a ticket and be part of that 50% capacity. As far as the visitors to the campuses, the public is still not allowed in. However, as, as campuses have end of the year functions and we're made aware of those, you are more than welcome to attend those if they're open in any way. Right now, they're not.
Well, the good thing that we're seeing is that friends are going in the right direction. The vaccination is really ramping up and I, I'm, I'm hopeful like everybody else that another month is gonna tell us a much bigger story and a much better story. So in that direction, I, I choose caution in this any moment.
And I think, I think that school districts, well, school boards across the state are being put in a very challenging position because I'll be the first to say, I'm not a medical professional and I think it would be very cavalier and arrogant for me to, to go against people who that is their professional job. They are experts in that field. And so I appreciate being able to look at experts or look to them for that guidance because that's not my area of expertise. And I don't want that on, on, on me to make the wrong decision on that.
And we, and we feel the same way. This is why we turn to, to them, trying to understand a disease that is still not under control.
I mean, I was on a call today with one of my leadership TASB alumni and, yeah, it's, they, they basically kind of went to public opinion more than what the scientists are saying. And so what they did was, in my opinion, it was interesting, but I'm thinking I wouldn't have done it that way or would have approved. And it was a four, three vote to go in that direction, so.
Now, we were in West Texas where the last case had been reported in November and we were now going on four months and there were no cases in our county, then I think we would be in a completely different situation, right? But, but we're not, we're in this hotbed, we're in central Texas. So again, just an opportunity to discuss it and to really talk about publicly since and we, we indicated these points in our letter that we sent out to all of our families, but nonetheless, just to revisit, these were our decision points for remaining with the current mask policy. Not to mention that a fact also that our nurses were really pleased, let's stay the course. We've got 50 instructional days left in the school year. Let's just, let's, let's just finish out the day, the, not the day, let's just finish out the year on a good note.
All right. Anything else? Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. So Dr. Sermoni is up next with a literacy and numeracy goals update.
Come on, is it okay if we take a really quick break?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Be great.
I mean, I don't mind just getting it up and.
Got my team with me today.
Oh.
That's a good town. Let me go get them.
Okay, great.
Okay, four minutes, go.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Um, so is everybody back? Microphones on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mics are on.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
We're still recording.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees and Dr. Thomas. Thank you for letting us come here tonight to present this. Normally we would do this on February. So we've put a kink in our plans to present this data to you, bring it to you in March. We can have our math and literacy data. With me tonight, um, three of my team who are usually, so I just come up here and present stuff. And they're everyone scrambling around to put this together for me. And I worked with them. Uh, we have a director of curriculum instruction, uh, Ms. Meredith Roddy. Director, director of school support, Ms. Yuray. And our director of special education, Dr. Stacy Kirk.
Hey.
So, uh, I'll be going through this and obviously if they, if I miss something, they'll throw something at me or, or say something and catch me. But I'll be relying them on as well tonight. Uh, especially because of this format, I'm kind of excited. I want to make sure I start inviting everyone to please. I kind of feel like we're at a point where, where it's almost like an inflection point. I sense that maybe it's time to begin to shift what I'm actually presenting to you and maybe focus on something different. So I really want you to feel free to stop and say, hey, could you give me something different there? Or, you know, I'd really prefer to see something else. It's part of the reason why I want my team here is so that we could really write some of that down. And I can bring other samples at different times or even through our Friday report and show you other things. Cause really this data is about helping you, um, see where we are at as a district, um, along with the lines within the boundaries of House Bill 3. Uh, cause this is really, uh, the, the law that guides this work. That said.
So Dr. Sermani, I can also interject for, for the board. This, um, this presentation is going to tie beautifully into what we're going to do next as far as goal setting and looking at the student achievement piece. So I think Dr. Sermani and his team are really open to us when we look at evidence of attainment and looking at the measures that we want to zero in on to determine whether or not we achieve our goals. Then, um, this is a, a perfect tie in. And I also, I would also challenge you to think about the reading from chapter one on, uh, the moral imperative of having all children, uh, have equality instruction at all times as a non-negotiable. So just tying it all in, uh, together as we embark at looking at this data.
I have a quick question. Do we always have to look at it just through the lens of House Bill 3? Or can we, you know, in order to ensure all students are achieving, like, can we see other, um, perspectives? Like, for example, students who are high achieving, if we want to ensure they're, they're getting a year's worth of growth. Can we see that even though it doesn't really fit within this context?
Yes, that's definitely.
House Bill 3 only really requires that we present, uh, an update on, on numeracy and literacy and, and CTMR, uh, multiple times a year. Now, how you want to craft that and what kind of information you'd like me to present to show whether we're making progress? That's this team here that, that, that really decides that. The, I will point out when we get to the goal, the actual House Bill 3 goals, that there is some things that are required of the goal as a, as, I don't want to call it a minimum, but they require certain language and certain metrics in that goal. We can always have other goals, other things, but we always have to have that piece in our district improvement plan. And I'll show you that. But yes, sir, we can, we can slice it, dice it any way you like.
And I think for me, you know, we talk about the data and literacy and numbers and foundations and all that stuff. I think for me, I don't know if it's part of this pro, this presentation or maybe added as something else, but how do we get there? What tools are we using to help kids meet these goals? Uh, whether it's with age, you know, House Bill or just data in general. I mean, I see a number, but I'm not sure how we're getting there. What tools are we using yet? I mean, for me personally, it's just to kind of educate me, because, you know, I'm not an educator, but just to kind of have that information.
And we slipped in a, in a visual for you here that I think will be helpful, at least. And when we get to that, I'll kind of look at you and you can tell me if I'm on the right track with them. Uh, I wanted to show you something that I've talked about, but you, well, you haven't been able to go wander around the campuses. So you haven't been able to see that.
Yeah, that was my whole point with the whole COVID. I mean, I feel disconnected with the campuses because we're not able to go and celebrate and meet and support you guys on those campuses.
And I, I started off with just a, you know, having thought about it and just if you needed some look for us, some things that you could be thinking about as you watch this. And it just so happened, I, I noticed Dr. Thomas loaded into the board book, when you get to your goals, some very, very similar questions to what I chose. And so they, different wording, but roughly the same thing. But these are really just questions to get you started. If you're not sure, well, what should I be asking myself as I'm reading this? This gives you a little bit of a, a target. As always, uh, we link this to our strategic plan and those are those parts there about building that foundation of literacy and numeracy and ensuring everyone's on grade level at third, fifth, eighth and 10th grades, uh, both in math and reading. That's the long-term goal. Uh, these are the House Bill 3 goals, uh, specifically there in the district improvement plan under the second goal. And, uh, I wrote it out in this performance objective. And the aspects here that you'll notice that, that are part of the requirement is it has to be based on third grade STAR testing. So both the math and reading is, have to be directly related to third grade. The other part that you'll notice, it talks about the domain three, part of the accountability system and the achievement gaps between different, uh, groups. And I'll show you a little bit about that in just a moment here, so you have a visual of what that means as well. But you'll notice this is fairly stylized. You have to have, um, a certain number of years out. And so that's spring 2024, a target of 75% of third grade. And then essentially you count the number of years and you divide it. And you're supposed to have X percentage point increase every single year. Now, since House Bill 3 passed, we haven't had a STAR test because of COVID. So, um, all I've done is just increased that number. The last time we had a STAR test, it was at 40%. And a reminder, this is about, uh, the meets grade level, uh, in STAR, not the passing level, the approaches levels. The one step up is what the metric is, the higher level. So this is the reading one and you'll notice that the, I keep using the wrong one. You'll notice that the math one looks very, very similar to that.
Do we choose 75 or is that part of House Bill 3?
We chose that.
Okay.
And that's certainly something that there would be, um, for you all to decide and discuss. That, that's a number we can, any way you want to do it. Essentially I chose 75%. Uh, when I was doing the numbers, I thought that that was a doable mark back in 2018 or 2019 when this was first rolling out. Uh, so what I put in here is, uh, the domain three accountability groups. And of course this goes back to 2018, 2019, uh, school years, because the last time we had STAR test. But I put this in here just because those goals, as you notice, I put on there, uh, about the domain three accountability subsets. These are the subsets they're talking about. And so I, I, just to make it fit, I had to average, uh, abbreviate a number of those. You know, the all African-American, um, Asian and, um, uh, American Indian continuously enrolled. These are students that were enrolled all year long and didn't change at all or change schools or change districts, I'm sorry. Uh, English language learners, economically disadvantaged, Hispanic, students that came and good, came and went potentially during the, uh, the school year. Pacific Islanders, special education, students who were formerly in special education, students that identify as two or more races and white. Uh, these yeses and no's, the state sets a target for the meets grade level percentage for each of these groups. And so each year it says you either met that target or you did not meet that target. And so that's what the yeses and no's are across for 2018, 2019. And while you get the number met and total eligible and a percentage, that's how that all comes about. Let's adjust that for a second and I'll show you the actual data. So this is what, um, and I, and I pulled one particular subset of the data. This is STAR, third through grade, uh, eighth grade meets grade level percentage and in all subjects, not just reading. I mean, I said reading, but it's not just reading, it's reading and math. So what I want to point out to you is, um, I'm just going to point out African-American is the first one right there. And you see that they had a 41 and a 43% there. I'm going to flip back for a moment because I want you to understand what the domain three, um, from the state accountability system really is measuring. So the African-American at 43% in 2019, yes, we made our target. Now, if you come over here, um, Asians did not meet their target. Asians scored 67%. So I, I want to point that out to you because the way the state accountability is set up for the domain three and the number of targets, there is a large disparity between the different targets for the different groups. So I, I always want to point that out to all educators I receive, because when you go and look at this, it gives the impression that while our Asians aren't doing well, but African-Americans are doing pretty well. When in actuality, uh, there is an achievement gap there. And so when I wrote that, the, when we looked at House Bill 3 goal, I always want to declare to people, this is what I'm interested in. This is nice, but that's not what we're after. This is what we're after is the, the fixing of the differences between the different ability groups. So I just wanted to make sure that, that you, you can see that on there. Any questions or wonders about that?
No, but this is exactly, uh, the type of data that the ERI task force is zeroing in on in really closing those gaps. And yes, raising the achievement for all kids, but you can see from the different groups, uh, some kids need more acceleration than, than other children in order to keep up with, uh, continuously increasing those academic levels.
I, I'd like to ask if there's a way that we can have further discussion on what, um, some of the tools that we're using. And maybe not tonight, in other meetings, of what tools we're using to bridge that, that gap. And just allow us to be part of your partners and think about that and, and see, you know, how we can help.
Perfect. We'll talk a little bit about that, but I, I think what I'm hearing is you probably want something a little bit more extensive than I've got with me tonight. And that's good. That was really just about talking about those goals and how they're structured and what that STAR data back for 2019 looks like. And so now I'm going to move into, um, the, the progress monitoring data that we use. And this is just, uh, I always try to put in a slide that has some really high level strategic planning. Just kind of give you some ideas of what, what we got, you know, sort of in our mind. We actually had a numeracy plan and we launched it, uh, right before COVID and started going. And then it's kind of, we had to shift gears. I was just telling Dr. Thomas, we became no longer the math and literacy department. We really became the virtual learning department because that's what was needed of us. And now we're beginning to move ourselves back to the math and literacy department again. It's not that we ever forgot math and literacy, it's that the greatest need was just getting teachers and students able to access instruction online. And so now that we, we've got that more going and, and we need to be, we're back, back focusing on these. And we really feel like the numeracy plan needs to relaunch, so that's on there. Uh, our first teacher cohorts completing their reading academy, the next cohort will start up. Um, we're, we've got to jump on that compared to other districts. So I'm excited that we already have a third. It wasn't quite a third, but, uh, uh, most of our teacher leaders at the K through third of our, this, this year. It was tough, it was hard, it was time consuming, given everything we had going on, uh, but they did it. And, um, they don't ever have to do it again. But they also can lead the way for all the newer teachers. And that was kind of the plan to have the teacher leaders do it this year. Or when I said teacher leaders, the more experienced, uh, teachers at K through, um, third grade.
Are we doing any sort of training like that for teachers in the, for eighth grade? You know, them, because we're, you know, shooting to have students on grade level reading by eighth grade, so.
That's as you said, right the second, no. Although, um, I'm planning on sneaking in some secondary people into the elementary reading cohort. And that, that's part of my, from my past as a principal. I learned the best thing I ever did was I found myself a couple of second grade reading teachers, convinced them to be secondary people. And they taught the rest of my department how to teach reading. Because you get kids in middle school who need that basic comprehension, phonemic awareness. And those are things that secondary teachers don't have, and there's not really PD out there. So barring that, I'm going to send people to learn the basics, foundations of reading. Now, I've heard, uh, pre-COVID, uh, that the state was kind of thinking about that as a future type of thing for secondary teachers. But of course, I think a lot of that got put on hold. So it goes back to, um, they don't know what grade level these people are.
Dr. Sermani, I'm interested in knowing whether, uh, some of the investments we made in the virtual, um, training, um, software that we had to purchase for some of these, uh, courses, were they valuable that we could keep them? That we find that we had some, some programs out there that were really useful, not just in a virtual setting, but in classroom setting?
Yes, absolutely. A couple of things there. Uh, one, one of the things that, that I think we did really well is we've identified training focus that would be good in the virtual environment. And also in what we would call blended environment, where I'm in person and I'm using partially technology. And we spent a lot of our time, so the tools teachers were learning from the curriculum department are applicable no matter where, which environment you're using. Now about actual tools themselves, so one of the interesting things i- in this kind of environment, you have to kind of let go of the rules a little bit because people are just trying to solve problems. There's so many that, that if we try to solve them all, nothing's going to get done. And so you kind of let it loose. Now, what happens, of course, is you get some duplicate effort, you get some failed efforts. But you also get some really neat innovations. Veterans Hill stands out my mind, who they created the entire math fluency, um, intervention piece. And I saw what they're doing and I, I looked at them and I said, we're just going to take what they did, times seven and we're done. They, they did a good job and they had purchased, I don't remember what the program is, but they purchased a particular software, really honed in. It was easy to read, it was easily replicable, um, and they, they had already set up a system. Erica Jordan, the, the math, the coach over there, excellent job, along with Misty Pattero. And so, yes, I think there are a number of those things. There's also a number of things that we need to, to squash, that people got used to, that you know what? We don't need that, we already have something that does that. That was a COVID day, it's got to go. I just hit the, the leave button on a, on a contract today, uh, for, for that reason. So, yes.
I think also the technology plan has some pieces about that in there related to like, um, measuring return on investment for technology that we purchase and having ways to measure like fidelity, you know, of the program and that, you know, we're seeing results from it. So I know that's something we talked about on the technology committee.
So I'm here just, uh, some, I always try to put out some challenges that we're thinking through and working on. You know, identifying root causes, you saw those achievement gaps there. Digging deeply into those, those achievement gaps, uh, different student groups. Those, those are difficult conversations sometimes, but there are ones that have to be had. Uh, we talked about those online products and just managing those use, that's really what, what that, that plan's talking about. That's Kendall Hong. So he's the one who has to end up managing all the programs and he sees that. And someone that I had to apologize to and said, I'm sorry, I had to just let it loose for COVID, then we'll, we'll get you back. And then balancing this, the, um, this is a new thing for us in Huddle and High School. And I've mentioned a few times, I actually mentioned it a year ago and then COVID happened and we didn't really get to do it. But we're now, we've got to go there, is we haven't really had intervention classes because a lot of the focus has been just earning graduation credits. So now we're going to be shifting the focus to learning, reading and math skills. And if you didn't learn it, you need to keep going at it. The problem is, excuse me, a lot of those courses won't earn you graduation credits. So you've got to be real careful about how you guide a student who's already a struggling learner to earn, learn the skills, but don't lose the credits you need to graduate. And that's, that's a new one, um, that they're going to start encountering next year at the, at the high school level.
But as we start incorporating some of those intervention classes more so at the middle school level, I assume the hope would be that once we have all those gaps filled in, we have that system in place. And as kids matriculate through, our needs for having more intervention classes at the high school might diminish. And so.
And so that's a really hard thing for a kid to have to balance.
It is, absolutely. And you're absolutely right. The whole idea is the more we fix it early on, the less you have up top, and the more resources you can bear and you can more quickly bring those kids forward, you ultimately in the far-flung future, these intervention classes at the high school will be very small. And maybe not even a full semester if you've got that small of a number, because it just begins to shrink down. Then you can take the intervention, and you know, I look at Dr. Kirk, and instead of pulling out kids in a resource class because we had these numbers, we can push smaller and smaller numbers into a regular classroom with the help in the classroom with those students. And so your intervention becomes more targeted, the whole system begins to function better and better as groups of kids are closer to closer grade level, moving their way up. Anyone who wants to work on literacy, you can't start at the high school level, you've got to start at the early levels and move their way up. Before you do that, sometimes people always want to jump on the high school because they see graduation and they see GPA, and they want to get there. Really, it's a reflection of the entire system that we've worked on, so. And so now we've got some data here. So this is your pre-K data, this is a reset kinder. Some of this was done on the boy, was done virtually. Lot less was done virtually in the mid-year, but we still do have at least one class that's virtual, that's pretty full class. This data, you want to see them at the end of the year to be at three, that means kinder ready. And you see we're progressing. These numbers are out in line, what I've seen in the past, they might be, they're actually a little behind than what they normally are. And I think that's probably just expected, to be expected, if I'm wrong, but we're still on target for all these kids to come out on average to be well above kinder ready. And that team has been doing a fantastic job with that. Incidentally, it is a pre-K adoption year. So at the next board, we will be trying to bring forward to what the pre-K teachers recommend we purchase for the state's opt-in materials for pre-K. Instructional materials, I'll be bringing to you next time. I wanted to, as a picture, this of course is Linda Pacicano and Greg Althoff, this is your administrative team at Cottonwood Creek. They got in the way of what I was trying to take a picture of, so we just took a picture of that too. Actually, I'm not the photographer, that was Ms. Roddy. But anyways, I want to show you this because the next sets of data, I kind of said it before, the data on a district level, when we're trying to do the progress monitoring of reading and math, has been really messy at a district level. Because you got kids in virtual, then they go in person, then they go virtual again, and then you have the reverse of that. You have someone that's in person, then virtual, and they're taking the test to different places. And you can tell because their data goes like this. And then you have kindergartners who their parents obviously helped them, and they came in person, and they really don't read very well. So you have all kinds of interesting stuff. But I want to show you this, and Mr. Oz, tell me if I'm on the right track about what you're kind of want here. I want to show you this because on a classroom and teacher level, that data that I'm going to show you is actionable. Because the teacher knows when the kid was going to, the teacher knows when they took the test, the teacher knows what the students are really doing, can reach out to other data points like, you know, why don't you just sit online with me and read for a while? And then look at the reading data and go, yeah, that doesn't match up too well. And so this data is actionable, and what they're standing in front of you can see is kinder first grade and second grade. The color bands will match what you're going to see in the pie chart. And so what they did is at the very beginning of the year, each student got a color card corresponding to their level at the beginning of the year. Doesn't matter what they tested and whether we believe the test was a good read or not. Wherever we took you, that's where you are. And so we accept that, and our job is just to move you that way. As simple as that. And so each of these cards represents a student. And so what these teams do is they go in to discuss, okay, we've got this guy right here, how are we going to move this person up as time goes on? And you can't really see the colors of the card, but the colors of the card help them determine whether they're being successful. Because if you have a green card, they go down, that's the wrong way. You have a red card that ends up here, that's going the right way. And so it's a really nice visual. I can't see it on here, we're getting, this is a fairly new thing, and what you'll, when we get back into the campuses, you'll see some neat innovations that different campuses have done. And the one I love the most is, once we can start taking pictures and getting into Skyward, is some people start putting pictures of kids on there. So these aren't just little cards anymore, that's little Johnny right there. You can't get away from, you can see the child's face. And these cards, they are tracking those achievement gaps, and they are putting those demographics on there so they can even see that information as they see whether their efforts are really impacting reading and math. So I wanted you to get that visual to see what that looks like.
I think I remember before we went into COVID, I mean, I talked about this, and then, yeah, I'm glad to get to see that. I think for me, and Dr. Thomas helped me with this also, that since you mentioned the achievement gaps, whether it's eco, African Americans, and then do, how can I phrase this? We start off with pre-K and kindergarten, and is there a level feel there, or do we find those initial assessments? Do you see those gaps between the different subgroups? And if so, you know, how's that being addressed when you get to third grade? And you brought it up earlier, like at some point, we're going to probably have to start having some uncomfortable conversations, why those gaps are there to begin with.
Yeah, I'll give you a couple of broad generalizations, and one thing we'll write down that's been on my mind that I've really never been able to capture somehow, and maybe it's time to really put some muscle in, is capturing, so there is definitely a difference between the students who go through our pre-K system and the students who come straight into kindergarten without having gone to pre-K. It's not universal, but it usually falls along economically. So students who are, and I'm overly generalizing completely because there's exceptions, but economically disadvantaged students who don't go through pre-K program oftentimes are behind their peers that went through a pre-K program. And so that, that's not just us, that's just pretty much everywhere. And so first grade in particular is always an area of emphasis, because it's that first grade teacher that gets them coming to all different levels and has to get them all to this point before they leave. First grade teachers are incredibly important. And now to answer your question, yeah, they all come in and gasp, but it has to do with educational opportunity and pattern, not. Now, where the gaps and the achieving gap show up, I do believe they show up in third grade. Absolutely. And that begins to make the wondering, okay, now why do I have some groups not being as successful by the time they get to third grade and not others? And I'm going to use the math example though, because one sticks out my mind. And this, this is something that Dr. Thomas, that we've been working on. I once found a young African American lady who, who in fifth grade scored perfect on a star test and somehow never got an out. Now, I don't know how a kid gets perfect on a star test and doesn't get into advanced math, it just blows my mind and makes me furious. Sorry. It's been a few years, but that didn't happen in fifth grade. That started further back as we talk more. So what is it that indicated to that student that they weren't supposed to be in advanced math? And how did that not get corrected? So I guess to give you that one story to illustrate, those kind of conversations, yeah, they're going to start having to come earlier and earlier as we keep backtracking to where does this begin to go off the rails for some kids? And third grade is a key, key year. Because once you get to first grade, if you can get in there in second grade, those gaps begin to get bigger and bigger and bigger. And by third grade, you know, really, or second grade, you really want to go ahead and have tried to catch that up. So I don't know that if I answered that question.
No, you did. I mean, I just think as we evolve as a district and we're doing, doing some uncomfortable work, that we'll have to start looking like this may not just be in the classroom, or it may be a system in place, there may be other challenges going on in that those areas that you may have to invest more resources to make sure that those, you know, that population, and I'm not just talking about African American, I mean, I look at the SPAD numbers and some of the other groups that are still, there's, there is a gap there. And I'm not thinking if we can tackle, not necessarily African Americans, but tackle it as a whole, I think it's going to benefit everybody in the district and those gaps that we have.
The question that comes to my mind is, here the pre-K students that are economically disadvantaged have an opportunity to qualify for this program without a cost. What can we do to allow the parents to understand this process of being able to, you know, get them into this program? I think that's probably a big trigger right there.
You know, you're asking a question, I don't have an answer to it, because our pre-K program, so if you're qualified, for those of you that know, by income, you automatically get pre-K for free. Just all you have to do, show up at my door, you're in. It doesn't even matter if I have room, I have to make room for you, I'm going to. So one question I can't answer that you're bringing is, I don't know how many of those parents who go straight into first grade were in our community, or they just came to our community. I don't have the answer to that, but that's actually something, probably five. But it makes it, but you have a good question because it would answer the question whether there are members of our community that we are not reaching, that I didn't even know about, because I've never looked.
It almost seems like, like we need a recruiter to be able to tackle every one of these families, you know, to make sure that these kids are in these programs.
That would be Elva Torres, Joe DeLeon, and Alex Alvarez. But no, especially in this COVID, we, one thing we did learn that we're putting forward is there are, there are members of our community that we cannot reach electronically. You can't reach them. We literally sent Joe down to La Michoacana at the. Yeah, to advertise, and he found some of our parents there who had no idea that it was time to enroll pre-K. Because don't forget, these are parents sometimes who have never had a child in our system, don't have an email on Skyward, have no connection to our school system because they're new parents. And they're just sitting around, they heard that, yeah, someday they'll, they'll reach out to you and say there's pre-K, so they're just waiting for someone to reach out to them. And normally we have big old to get together and a hundred people, can't do that in COVID. And so we realized, wow, there's some people that are just missing, and they eventually hear about it at normal times and show up on our door in August. But we really want to get to them early, not just August, it actually goes on and on for years. So yes, I think we've got to reach out more.
But I think a more powerful piece to this work is the fact, when you look at that picture, Linda shared with us, if you notice the middle, the middle row, that's her first grade team, and she was bragging on those teachers. And I don't think they had any kids in the red and the yellow, the kids had already moved up. And she says, this team has really come together, they're real competitive as a team, not necessarily amongst each other. They don't want to have kids in that bottom level. So when you go into these data rooms, part of our job and our challenge is to make that a safe place. Yeah. It's a safe place to have conversation about our students' progress. And who are these children that are moving through this reading continuum? What are our best practices? What is our plan of attack for reaching these children? Because obviously, the last group where Greg is standing, that's second grade, that's going into third grade next year. And you can see there's some kids in that red zone, and it is March. So we have two and a half months to affect some of those children and where they are to get them up higher as we move them on to the grade level. Another chart you don't see in this picture is the fifth grade, and that's where I zeroed in when I was in the data room, because I'm thinking, all right, folks, we're sending these kids on to Hutto Middle School. So what, what do the next two and a half months look like? And then when Hutto Middle School receives them, Mr. McCullough has to be ready to receive those children where they are, and then pick up the baton from there. So these, these data rooms are powerful mechanisms for moving that data and having those difficult conversations. Because it's not about, Mr. Owens, why are all your children in the red zone? It's like, okay, who are this, who are the children now? Now, it's up to Linda, if all those red, if all those children in the red zone belong to one teacher, and they've been there since the beginning of the year, we've got some issues. Because now it's not just one or two, it's a whole class, right? So those are the patterns and conversations that emerge from having these, these data rooms.
You know, the way you describe it now with both pieces together really defines a great solution environment of being able to figure out how to best fit the styles for, for kids that work well. So great job there.
Yeah, because that's where it comes from. If you've got some master teachers in there, they'd really know how to move kids through that continuum. And then by the same token, I think Sherri was asking, all right, so you've got these children up there in the green, what are we doing to keep them there? Because in the past, two years ago, when we were looking at data, we had kids passing backward. So they had passed that given year, but they had passed with fewer correct items. So that means that we had not done a good job in continuing to grow those children and keeping them in that green zone. So just like the red, the children in the red zone need extra attention, our children who are excelling also need to be challenged and need to be, they, they need to have those rich learning experiences too.
Yeah, I was going to say that, like, this is great, and I understand the purpose for this, because we're trying to get those kids in from red up to green. But the kid that comes in green at the top and just sits there, and every year just sits at the top in green, I don't, I would almost want to see more of a vertical, you know, scale across grade levels where I can see this student is placing end of year first grade, and I can see within a year, they were able to place into like middle of your second grade. Because then I know they're growing just as much as the kiddos who are below, you know.
You're marked down there, there's actually a report that does that.
Okay.
That particular program actually has something like that, I have to play with it to see what it does.
Yeah, and it just serves a different purpose to view it like that, but I think it's just as important as, you know, this work. The other question I have is, you know, once you identify the students who need intervention, how are we tracking, like, what skills and standards to focus on and pinpoint so that we're filling those gaps? How are they doing that?
Yeah, there's a number of ways of doing it, depending on what assessment they're using to identify those gaps. So I'm going to use TPIR, for example, because that's one that, well, it's actually going away, because the state's making it go away. But at the time being, it's like one that's very commonly used all across the state, we use it in kindergarten. So a student on TPIR, it will actually say, one of these students are down here, will actually identify discrete skills, phonemic awareness for, for the T sound or something like that. And that teacher can pull, the classroom to yourself can pull interventions and work with that child. And that goes back to creating those small groups, which technology really helps with the small groups, so they can ask them intervention time. If that student isn't progressing, each of your campuses have intervention teachers who are some of your top teachers and show, they, they are very good at what they do. Those teachers may work with that student and have pullout time to give them extra time on particular tasks. I don't remember what they use, they got different, because obviously if it didn't work on that, you tried to do something different. They have a different type of program, and I can't remember what it is off the top of my head. But then they have that partner smart to measure their discrete skills. This conversation I just had is a lot more sophisticated than if you'd asked me two years ago. The campuses have done a much better job of identifying particular skills and learning in these teams together, that we really need to hone in on that. And some teams get even fancier where one teacher specializes in particular skillsets, and they trade kids. Like, this kid needs your expertise, I'll take that guy, and you take that one. So now you've got multiple teachers and kids moving around, depending on what their need is. But that's probably the most advanced of the teams of what they're doing. And very similar in math, by the way. I kind of focus on reading a lot, but it's the same thing with the math. Look at some pie charts. These are our, this one's the, this is the kinder chart. And as you see, green is good, blue does good, yellows in trouble, and red really not good, or needing urgent intervention. And this is the beginning of the year, this is more, so this is a good example of the wackiness of the data. Normally, we would see a constant improvement, but from the get-go, the teachers have told me that this is, that the kids don't come in reading like this. And so I think this is getting to a, closer to a real picture right there. But that's why I was saying, they can use that data and they know those kids, but on a macro level, I hesitate to make too many decisions based on what I'm seeing in the data coming in just right now. I'm flipping through, this is the Spanish, you'll notice we're missing a boy. The boy was the casualty of COVID at the beginning. They're only about a third of the kids, for whatever reason, that tested, there are about 90 kids that should be in this. That's 90 kids. I didn't even put the other half in here because it was so different, because it wasn't even close to the same group's kids. And that was just failing on our part to get that assessment done right, fully virtual. Some kids took it and some didn't, and then the window closed and people just moved on and we didn't go back and get it. That one. Also note, this is your Spanish dual language students also. So this also includes English speaking, sorry, English dominant students taking the Spanish test for the first time as well. So we begin to test them in two languages mid-year. So I'm not going to talk about each of these, I'm going to flip through them. If you have a question, you want me to stop on any, I'm happy to, but I think I'll give you the broad context about them.
How, as you're flipping through, how does, how do these numbers compare to what we saw last year? I know there's a lot of conversation about the COVID slide. Do we feel like the middle of the year, which is what we are saying is probably the most reliable testing, given all the circumstances, how do those compare to this time last year?
Of course. Yeah, of course. Yeah, of course. I also though have, I stopped on fifth grade because fifth grade teachers tell me that it's the complete opposite of Kinder kids. The fifth grade students virtually do worse on the test than the in-person kids do. And so it's strange because the Kinder virtual kids tend to do better virtually. That's not, that's not a true assessment either way. So even this right here, even though it's worse, I don't know, I I believe it is worse really. But I don't know how much worse. I don't think it's that much worse. Because I have a hard time believing that 50% of our fifth graders don't read on grade level. That just doesn't, that just belies all my educational instincts and knowledge and their scores from fourth grade. But yes, I I think there is somewhat of a slide. And you know, what you're speaking to is when we get back into the school year and we can have a real valid assessment, that's gonna be a real key data point just off the bat in the school year. We're gonna have to be all hands on deck and make sure we get some real good clean look at where we're at.
And just to be clear, we're talking about the Renaissance Star assessment, right? And it's all online always. Yes.
So these are, I pretty much already gone over these, but these are some of the data reflections that we have on a regular basis as well. Next set, it's the same thing. It's just the Renaissance Star math. Everything I said on the reading side applies to the math side as well. Except that you won't see any Spanish tests on here. These are done in English for the most part.
Do they, do they provide any breakdown data or is it just like, here's their score? Like, do you get to see it at domain level or any other details from Renaissance Star?
Yeah, yeah, like the teacher can see all kinds of different things. You know, I think the question for you all to ponder and perhaps in the goal setting is what kind of data and progress monitoring would you like to see? I heard a couple of things that may be a discussion to be had.
I'd be interested in seeing, since we blend our bilingual group in there, I'd be interested to see what are Spanish kids that are first language Spanish are doing on the math scores versus our kids that are not first language Spanish, but they're in the in the bilingual or the dual program.
Dual language Spanish dominance too.
Yeah, yeah.
Version of the math star and if that's Renaissance star. So this is a, moving on to the secondary level. Secondary level, we we switch from doing grade level screeners and I'm bringing you data that's actually completely focused on intervention classes. And so this gives you an idea, the students that aren't reading on grade level on whether they're progressing or not. And one of the discussions I'll tell you is we were talking about how this actually kind of gives you a little bit of a false impression of what this is. And so I apologize ahead of time, so not my intention. So a couple of notes on Read 180 data. So Read 180 is a class and they take an SRI and it gives them a reading level. And they give you three, they give you a lot of data, but data points. Way below base, low, basic and proficient. The thing about this data is if you're proficient at the beginning of the year, we shouldn't have put you in the class. You were just messing around when we were assessing you. You're apt. So they're not in this data anymore. And so we replace that person with a student who really isn't reading. And so I realize that I'm not really giving you a fair comparison of whether these kids are progressing or not. And I'm gonna have to do something different here because there is kind of what you were talking about, point-to-point growth by student. Where I could say 22 students went forward and four did not. And I think that that's probably a much better look at this than other than the data I'm giving you right now. The other thing is if a student's way below basic, if you're a sixth grader reading on a first grade level and you advanced three grade levels, you're still way below basic, even though you've done a tremendous amount of growth. And again, that's not really captured what I've got here. So that's something I'll definitely do better and presenting this in a better way.
For those kiddos who are proficient at the beginning of the year, are we like immediately letting them exit out of that class? Because I know like four years ago, they had to finish the whole semester. It was a very rigid rule of like about four years ago.
Well, and I think it's a progression of the thought, well, you failed your star test, therefore this is your punishment.
Yes.
And and of course, that one, that's not the reason you're in the class. You're taking up a spot and two, we shouldn't be using the star test as a determination whether you go in the class. We should already know if you could read or not. I don't need a star test. Which goes back to, was the ELA teacher involved in the discussion of putting you in here? Because the language arts teacher should already know before, long before I have a star test in my head. And just so you know, and a more practical reason too, for if you're a secondary person, working with the two principals and teaching them how to schedule so that you have a reading class and you have an art class next to it because art does discrete units. So you can move a kid anytime you want to and art, our teachers are all looking at me like, no, you can't. You just gotta capture when you switch to clay, then that's a brand new skill, move them over. So having those kids have a place to go to leave the reading class is also important. So, so.
Can't tell if that bothers you at all.
It's because he's an ex-middle school principal. You have to know how to work that schedule.
I think changing the way you present this data would be really useful because if you look at it at first glance without any of those narratives, me, Read 180 is not an effective program.
I know, that's what that's.
Missing out, you're missing out on that, especially like you're talking about those kiddos that are lots and lots of years behind and you're not able to see that celebration that they've been able to.
And and there are reports. You just have to play around with that system. And now that we've got Jolynn Mead on the background, she'll be able to pull those reports. Because that's really what we're after, they're growing.
So would this kind of data, would this kind of data be things that would be beneficial in this dashboard?
Because we're spending a lot of money on Read 180. So this is a perfect one to look at whether or not children are progressing and how and looking at their exit, their exit points, right? How quickly are we, are we bridging those gaps and getting them back into into mainstream? Because that's the whole idea behind this. This should not be a program that you're in four years in a row.
And I think as a board, I think this is, that's the kind of data that is really powerful for us to let us know, are we allocating things appropriately? I think that we, I think we all collectively know that, especially again, when you go back to this first chapter that we're gonna talk about eventually, you know, like, we all have that, we have to have that collective understanding that every child has the ability to grow and progress and and have, at the very minimum, a functional educational, like by the time they leave us, they should be able to have some basic functional literacy skills. And I think when we see this kind of stuff, it tells us if us, if we as a board, are we doing things to help make sure that that happens?
Just flipping through, I think you saw that data. There's out of middle school as well. This middle school was a little bit more particular about the kids. They definitely got the kids who were struggling readers in the class. So they actually did make actually quite a bit of growth, but like I said, didn't capture it well there. And so there were a couple of things that just in that group that we learned. We actually, just so you know, there was a teacher on FMLA during this time that wasn't able to. So we didn't have a certified reading teacher in there as well. We're also getting a little bit more savvy about being able to track how fast the kids are taking the test. Middle school is, they're notorious for click, 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 and try to get out and done.
But once again, there's a report that'll tell you that.
Exactly. And it's kind of one of those five things, sometimes people feel like, well, you're always supposed to give the test. I mean, it's not like I'm giving them a grade or it's a star test. Yes, they can take it again. The whole point is to get an accurate read. And if you have to make them sit the test time and row till they finally give up and take it for real, that's fine. That's okay. That's what the whole point of the assessment is, not to get a grade. Middle school math intervention is just really similar. It's kind of the flip side. That also gives you an idea. Once again, I need to pull the growth measures out because it has, that suffers from some of the same problems as the other one does. Very similar type of program. This is eye ready. And this is a separate math intervention class that takes the place of an elective for these students. And this just gives you a quick idea.
But I think, I mean, that data is still good to look at. It gives you a starting point and then we just dive in.
And finally, this high school interim assessment, I've probably said this a lot. This is not the data I'm going to be showing you for the, we're gonna change over the data this past year was the year we're gonna do it. But we had a, we ditched that effort to focus on virtual learning. Because this data here is based wholly on subsets of the curriculum. So put it another way, this doesn't mean that 50% of your students can't pass an algebra star in EOC. Those are not equivalent. This means in that one section of algebra, they were scoring 49%, which is still not where I want it to be. But it means something very different than getting a 49 on the decibel. It's a very different thing. The only thing I point out is although we're doing year-to-year comparison, the ELA curriculum changed. So these aren't straight one-to-one or apples-avels comparisons because the the whole state curriculum changed, which in ELA, it's not that hugely different. But standards tested during those times might be a little bit different. This I intend to disappear starting next year and you'll see something that's much more aligned to discrete reading skills of some kind to give you a better look at the high school data. And that's all I've got for you.
I have a question about IAs, the interim assessments, because my child says all the time in fifth grade, like, I took an IA today, you know, in like every subject. And I'm like, what is this? How often are you taking it? Like, there's not a lot of clarity around that.
Sure. So an interim assessment is it's really for teachers and district staff to find out how much of the taught curriculum the students actually learn. And so it's not meant to be analogous to a star test. It's not meant to be an assessment of whether you can read or do math. So the the state lays out all the stuff you're supposed to learn in a school year. We chop it up into sections. We take that section and say, here's an IA that covers that. Whether it's super hard or whether it's super easy section, that's not what we're interested. We're interested. How well did you learn this section? I always give the example of you're about to have a sixth grader. The first IA of sixth grade, all the students struggle with it because it's really hard what the state put in curriculum at the beginning of the sixth grade. And that's just what it is. And then everybody's scores go up the rest of the year. If that's not, they're improving necessarily. That means that the curriculum is different is what it is. So going back to your question, interim assessment is a way for a teacher to say, okay, I found it this way, but my kids didn't really learn it too well and I should reteach it or teach it a different way come next school year. Well, actually, you should be doing both those things. You reteach it and teach it differently the next year.
How many times do they take that throughout the year?
One, two, three, go, three times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Simoni. Thank you, curriculum team. Three of you have long drives.
Good night. Thank you.
So Dr. Simoni, do you mind bringing up my presentation next? It's one on goal setting. So.
Now that we've had a full night's meeting, now we get to do goal setting.
And then the book study.
Book study. So I had asked you guys, you know, throughout the week to be thinking about the 2021 goals and not just the goals, but how do we know, like, the evidence of attainment? If on the goals that you thought were important and it's not just about these goals that we do because that's what we have to do, but how do we know that we are meeting those goals? Some of those measures. So hopefully, you know, everybody at least got a start on that. You know, we had goals already in place that we evaluated Dr. Thomas on based off 2020. So and we're a little bit behind on this. Obviously, we had some things coming up at the beginning of the year. So normally we would have done this a lot sooner. But here we are today and we'll get this done. And these going forward, whatever we set tonight going forward will be our quarterly evaluations that we give just to do the check-ins to see how we're progressing. So we have a, well, I personally, I think it's a fun way to do this tonight and it'll get us up, moving around and talking and.
Yes, so thank you for that. Before we get to our goal setting, I want to just remind you or remind us, not just you, it's all of us, some goal-setting best practice reminders. So I'm gonna take this. Can you go up one slide, Dr. Simoni? So these are taken from.
Forty X. Forty X.
The forty X, is that what you call it?
Four disciplines of execution.
Yeah, the four disciplines of execution. So more often than not, great teams, best, best of intentioned teams. They do a great job in setting the goals, but we often fail in the execution. So I don't want us to fall prey to that. So first best practice is I would like for us to aim for no more than three goals. So because when we do that, this is what they call the WIGs, right? The wildly important goals. That when you focus on two to three goals, chances are you're gonna achieve all of them with excellence. If we have four to 10, we might get one. And when we get 11 to 20, we don't get any of them. Now, it doesn't mean that the other goals are not important, but these three are the ones that we're gonna just really go nuts over. The next best practice, Dr. Simoni, is to look at those lead measures, which is what Billy was talking about as far as the evidence of attainment we seek for the goals. What are those specific data points? What are those measures that are gonna lead to that goal? What measures can we influence and which ones are predictable? Because we we could set a goal that may be too lofty or that may take us quite a long time to get to, depending on what we're gonna focus on as far as measures. The next best practice is to keep a compelling scoreboard.
Picking up on it now.
Oh, you're picking up. So where do we want to keep the scoreboard? Do we keep it in our conference room? Do we keep it in here? Should be something simple? Should, we should display it publicly? Or maybe we just bring it. We bring it forward in every agenda. And that's gonna tell us immediately if we're, if we're gaining, if we're lagging, if we're winning or not. And really, it'll give us a reason to celebrate, not just at the end of the year, but in between. And then the very last one is create a cadence of accountability. How often do we want to look at these measures? Do we want to do it twice a month, monthly, every other month, every three months? So.
Can you go back a couple of slides?
One more?
Those, no. Those are actually lag measures.
Well.
The the lead measures are the behaviors that will drive the change. The lag is what you're measuring, right?
No, but you don't want to focus so much on the lag measures.
I understand.
Because that's what you want.
I understand, but what the bullets there are referring to lag measures. So just, I've done this plenty.
Okay.
Yeah, those are lag measure bullets. So anyway, just this thought, the difference between lead and lag is, lead is the behaviors that drive the attainment of the lag measures.
That's right.
And if you're looking at at these things here, these are, these are lag measure, anyway, long story short. So just.
Well, but I do think that when you act on the the lead measures, that's what this group is gonna be focused on. For example, we want all kids reading on grade level by the end of third grade or by the end of every grade level, really, right? But what are we going to be looking at?
The behaviors.
Yes, what are the behaviors that we're gonna be looking at? And what are those behaviors that we can influence and what can we predict? Yeah.
And and really just in mind that, I mean, I think that we're all like coming together and and I love hearing you guys referring to the book and the things we're learning out of the book. And, you know, just as we're talking about three, what was it, WIG?
Yeah, wildly important goals.
WIGs.
They call them WIGs.
You know, and and as we do the activity that we're gonna do, just like think, think big and and think about how you take that big idea and what are those things that can get you there?
So there are 12 of us. What I'd like to do is pair up an executive, one of the ELTs with a board member. And what I've done around around the room, you see poster boards that just have goal and evidence of attainment. So the existing ones are on those poster boards. And if you want to keep any of those, that's great. But if we want to move on to some new ones, we can do that too. And again, it doesn't mean. Uh, but if we want to, uh, move on to some new ones, we can do that too. And again, it doesn't mean that those are not important. Some of those things we might still want to work on, but, uh, what are going to be our our top ones? And I I think, uh, like those, she asked you to come in with, uh, some goals and that's what we want to see on the blank sheets because I don't know what, um, what some of the ideas are that you've generated. And then we'll, we'll stay at our po- at our poster sheet for about five, seven minutes. And then we'll do a rotation so that we can read what everybody else has.
So that means every paper has to have something written on it so we can come read it.
Wait, I have clarification question. So if I start there, am I writing down all of the goals, like, based on our conversation? And all the evidences of attainment? And then as we wander around, we look at what the other goals are?
Yes.
Either another poster sheet you can't, I've got, we've got some extra.
That's your brainstorming with your partner sheet. So brainstorm whatever.
So are we going to basically, we can still take some of the goals that we already established and just reaffirm that we want to keep that in.
Are there markers? Yes, there's markers in this bag. And here are your partners. So, um, Ms. Billy, you're with Todd. Terrence, you're with Henry. Uh, Morgan, you're with Lisa. Uh, Felix, you're with me. Shara, you're with Robert. And Edgar, you're with Glenn.
So go pick a paper and grab a marker.
You've got a fun team.
I know, that's what I was thinking.
All right, Lisa, where do you want to meet?
Where are the markers?
In this bag.
Does anyone want post-it?
Oh, you got your post-its.
If anyone needs them.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, yeah, I took notes too.
Like, do you want to go to that one?
Hey, what's up, Billy?
One of y'all's goals, goal setting, the strategic. So I have to go to put in measures. That was something you and your leadership in the community said is.
This paper.
I remember there were actually three different goals. I had like ten. And some of this all got consolidated as we worked in the planning. So the beauty of the goals are then we will go back in this case and work on performance objectives that make their way into the district improvement plan. So for this coming year, of the district improvement plan, it's, it doesn't mean it has to be a report out. Doesn't mean that's your accountability tool. But it's me having to do my job in order to build seven. But. Operationally, how does goal seven fly the academic challenge? Degree capital improvement speaks for itself.
So, um, we're looking at.
Sure facility.
And results.
And operational personnel aligned to support learning in these. Now, how do I make that relevant to a custodian when you're one who focuses on underrepresented groups? We need to keep an environment that is welcoming to all, that works, helps, will make the kids. And so I'll get to get in here and look at different types of ways to create, um, strategies to support that. So if I look at how open up this, this goal, it all affects the development strategy. We have great ideas, but anticipate not approach to learning. If we have blended learning scenario, we have at-risk children who are in R H A. Want to play football, right? But go to R H A. Might also hold it, the big house. That's different from all being in their location where they're contained. Now they're coming here going, how do I make a junior bribes get so that he can access or she can access middle high school, maybe for football. Got the cards. They can now use the card access because it's tied to their master schedule. But then they come all year full of classes and then go over to Eastwood and County. So that's how this works. People take that and support her.
From the various.
Silence that we made in the workloads and develop strategies to support. I'll just show you a couple of more things that we'll get off of this because it'll be more important to get into what you can. Update technology plan. It's continuously updated. How does it support blended learning? How does it, how does it support non-traditional learning? Uh, again, master facility assessment, still leaving, rethinking the way space works in the day of code, post code. Blended learning, possible virtual learning. Another strategy in here. Are we staffing? How do I staff and schedule? That's an example.
Yeah.
The SIP is a five-year plan. The SIP is an annual plan.
Dr. Thomas?
Okay, so this is. Real quick question. Is is that the only that that are available to us?
No.
Just put it on our list.
Here's, uh, you know what?
This is a golf course. So, or I gotta get one. So. Okay, I got cuppers. Okay. Oh, and I don't know how this is.
This is a very poor term.
With much higher.
The learning.
Actual. Well, okay, two extra. That's gotta be awesome. Also, it's. I'm going to need to learn this. I can never show all. The thing that we're doing, we have. But we're not, I'm talking about, I don't know, we do like a hundred or four hundred or whatever. How do we? Almost like the COVID. For me, so I think it's done better than others because of what Joe's doing and all that. But like, how do we get those kids back in the school? And so we, how do we? You can also use. See, you've got some things to consider.
It's money that's easy to come in.
I like the call. I'm sure every school is going to think it's a percentage of people to make up for it. Your chip is right now. How do you catch them up? But we're not spending any more dollars on energy. So, so there's three pots of my well, and I guess you can say grams, but that's. Honey or, I mean, it's almost like in the fall, they have the fall to try to.
Patientcy.
That's. So I have two stops and return money back. And that's like, that goes, like, say.
This, 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 I like that. This is the only thing that's been different to me.
Yeah, no, we do. We're just. I'm not quite sure. I was going to check this too, because if these get sugar up, then our A D goes up.
The X percentage students are higher.
That has a lot of financial. I'm not involved in the area. But obviously, these tiers can represent more than anything is right.
You guys have management. To tell you.
We need to buy them. It's really interesting helping out your. I also think. Really. Pull in once a week, once a month.
How it's.
Yeah, I mean, it's been enough. Probably have your kids. So I'm just staring out there. Definitely.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one I'll be out there.
I so thank you for. That fits well. I want to try to stick as much as I can. Right, so I learned, I helped create that the other day.
Because I see a big.
But you know, the value. This kind of. This is. You know, you guys. Not it's all, it's that. I'm going, because the college community does. They need to grow up. There is some things.
We're to my plan, we have security ratio.
And.
That more time, uh, to exceed everything.
In the beginning. My great center.
My great center.
So we, and knowing that we went to those measurements. We should have gotten the kids who are taking those courses. Really, really nice, really good. But if we are, uh, having these kids get certified, can we.
So what we may say.
Like this last time.
Like my previous.
Certification. If there are way. We can promote more.
And in place. But until a couple of years ago.
Do you think we should go less or do we want?
That'll spin that money. Let's decide the.
I think. They're more like. That's it. They identify for all. It's.
But yeah, did she said that there's extra papers somewhere?
A little bit of calling out. That's such a. But. This last.
No, no. Don't let, don't tell us.
They have all that much sense that I have, not because.
No, these. So, so. You have a lot of recycling one of these and soon. Find them. Achievement. Timeframes and.
Nothing contributes.
But it's they also, it's almost like. Some of those certifications you can hold. Test for. Figure out where they are. Hey, these are the kids ready. Doing it however. They're nodding. And the ones.
Then we discuss them. You feel proud because you're.
Yeah.
Evidence of attainment is, yeah, there's a player. I'll just show it to you here, but I think it's on the website. The Sumatis. I would figure, yes, they're where they are about. Academically, yes. Go there. So we go, here's, here's.
That's. And and that's why. That makes sense. And you guys were all three of us. So like, that's, that's. I expect. So.
More exciting because they're down here as well. I'm just trying them. And they have over target people.
Okay, so what I can do. I mean, it could be. Here, here. Just so that I don't, you know, I'm. I think you have the wall. At a wall with two. I hope there's that thought about.
When you break it down from that perspective.
Yeah.
Deception.
I call them. So it's down in three board members in the committee that elected the chairman because the chairman. Those come and notify the chairman.
And either, yeah, even our girls. Everybody wanted every. Really, I'm understanding the kids and making them feel. Understanding the world. So. So valuable. So valuable asset.
Our history. Yes, that's.
Well, and then.
For some of the. Yes.
That's why.
That's why. It's. I don't know what I shared. And what is. Scare us.
It's all.
It's not. It's not. It's not.
Things. This is.
Y'all. That's.
I was. Either.
As a school.
Yeah. Oh. Allows when all the board members to ask questions. And those board members. And maybe they look. So we can add that to. If we want.
Base of.
Do we see that guy?
Or.
Training. And this is a tool that you can.
What's your.
You know, it's.
Many. There's a lot of. places. What if.
Running tag.
Dude, where's the. That was night.
There's.
There's. We manage. And. Current. Not in those places. At my.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, everyone, yes.
They're.
But they're next to all.
Right.
Um. You. And we typically all pretty much. It's a long. You know. She. I think.
Those. We. But look at us, I mean, we said. But we but again, for us, it was gonna be. And I told her like, look, you're home. I. We can. I mean, we can do the math and and this is the easy type.
Question.
We're at the.
Great.
Uh so we. I mean, we.
I'm doing.
And. We have. Every night. But you know, but.
End of night.
I would be.
So.
Of course, it's awesome. I put. I'll shoot.
Get up to.
Prayer. Why can't that I can't.
I'm about to throw this down, but I still. I'm thinking. I'm thinking. Updates.
Yeah. We're.
Versus.
But I think that should be talking automatically.
This. I'm. I was. Station.
Yes. Maybe. Maybe.
Number.
Right.
Plus. Feel.
Because.
A successful. Competent little boy. Everything, stuff like this.
Which maybe.
It's gonna be easier.
Here.
I mean.
Here.
This.
Morning.
I hope that we're doing the right thing, you know. Like, that's all I know. That's like.
What I hear is.
I can just.
Everything stays. Good achievement.
Because there's. So much emotion involved.
You know. Issue. True. Allows us to take off. At projects. The. Master. Two thousand nineteen. I had. Class. But y'all. Every year.
Yeah.
Hey, master assess.
This. Every. Like. I mean. I mean. That's. That's.
No.
Um.
I'm.
Yourself. But your. Stay.
Or.
Well. Well, for you.
Yeah.
Very much back to gold.
No.
What is it? Much price. And it's current gold. Uh it's different.
Think about.
And how.
You were.
That's two different gold, right?
Common.
I would. Making increase to. To the. If they were. I think. The time.
Because I go.
Why don't we do twenty.
So like age. That one.
And so.
That's. I still. I still.
Yeah, because so.
I think.
How do.
Yes.
Elements are. Pretty. Probably those are. You know. If we.
Okay.
So. Because that's what they've seen at home.
How do elements.
They.
Which.
Maybe the parent.
Had it. I know it's. Size. I have. I'll. For this. For your.
Yes. Yes.
That. That's okay. Yeah. And I'm.
So.
Little word. De-gradating.
So.
On how.
Yeah.
It's part of the safety. The disparity there.
Disparity.
Looking.
And it's.
Yeah. I'm. Direct.
People say that because Chris and I have been working on. Chamber, you can real safety officers. And again, they're not security.
I.
And safety.
Yeah, there's.
Uh. And we're wanting to change the job. Not really because of just. Because of S E L. What role do these. They. On a daily basis.
Just.
Only. Well.
Implementation.
You find.
That was. It's good. I love it. So. I'm. I'm. I'm.
I'm.
Yes, all that relationship. Big John. Uh.
Still.
I'm.
That's what my question about. Tradition.
Yeah. Tradition. These guys.
Very good. Tradition.
And so they know.
Traditions. So they have a question of what does.
We see.
After. What if. Teachers.
Yeah. Where were you.
Spending our time.
Mine. Take a pulse.
Come on.
Okay, folks, let me take a pulse reading. Have you all done a data dump?
Yes.
Tab, okay. So this first cycle, I gave you extra time because you really need to get everything out. So now we're gonna we're gonna rotate to the to the next one. I'm gonna bring my phone with me so I can put a timer. Who wants to be a timer?
Is it gonna be without commentary or do we stand by and kind of.
No, no, that's why you have pens.
Can you do something without commentary?
He did just now. You did that. Good job.
Okay. Okay, put us. Five minutes.
Okay.
You have a pen, you can comment, you can write, you can ask questions. He who holds the pen holds the power.
So five minutes per poster?
Yes. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, you're the boss, I was just clarifying.
I'm just gonna put.
Let's all rotate.
And then when that goes off, they go to the next one. Okay.
Five price.
Yes, five price. Okay, everybody shift.
So what are we deciding to go this way?
Yep.
You would just, you just want to go what we just wrote or?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we'll get an actual.
Okay.
Oh, um. Yeah, what is that? Okay, it's like a.
Scratch.
And I'll obviously I'm gonna need my paper. Yeah, spelling. It's over on that. Okay. Yeah, spelling.
I follow diet from the.
Okay, I'm starting the five minute.
It's gotta be the cycle that God bless.
Play.
Sure, this is my best.
All of them. To read.
They don't take it. No, no, no.
Uh huh.
Play.
Yeah.
They're cutting into us five minutes. Right? We just. Stop.
Here. This. We're supposed to take. No, we're. We we moved. Those were just kind of.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Pretty soon she went by.
But can I take this?
Oh, because we're all. Well. Jesus. Me is like.
I.
Just.
Yes.
But they're already. He should.
They're.
I know. Oh.
We moved out, so. Nice.
They.
Yeah.
This. Trick.
Some sort of. Throwing. Chocolate. Want you to test. That's. Okay. Now, what you. I have to say she's very disappointed.
Um. One of the biggest things right now. With.
Uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Kind of tops back. You're.
And it's. Absolutely. Kind of commitment. Yeah, I mean, that's a life. It's a vibe. I guess. About how. One day. Really.
Yeah, yeah.
Teacher.
Their testing is very. Okay. I think we missed something.
I think it's like, okay.
So that's her concern. Because she got. Kids. This is. This is.
So this.
I'm sorry. So that's your S E L.
That's.
Yeah, that's kind of, that's all.
That's the limit. So.
What connects them to.
Yeah, I mean, you were nine, it's a.
Sorry, and I wrote.
Right. I'm. Interesting. That's. I already. We talked about that before. Uh that's. I was. I was confused. A D A one.
Yeah.
Yes.
What are your. Your A D A.
A partnership.
Your students.
They.
And you think you don't like.
Indish.
Just your.
You're just wrong number.
Wrong number. And how many. What I wonder. I wanna see.
That's.
Okay. Ask that. That's the. We don't. Yes.
I get those. Actually.
I can.
Maybe. I don't like.
So then. And then the. Point was.
I can. Their way.
I can.
I. Great.
Well, water's always higher than those.
A lot of the. How. The dozen.
There are.
I mean, it does.
I don't know. Maybe.
It's the wrong or.
So.
Oh, are you. So that like.
I think.
Yeah, there's. Yes.
And they have.
I should say.
Totally. Then he's. That's.
There's all their. For. Is.
Um. Kind of. Um. We have to follow. So. So we just can't go out and fire. And a request for quality. Since. I have professionals. Must have. Our. Accountant. Market. So. Request. So then you.
All got it.
It's all. Whether. I would.
Yeah. I wonder how. Just. Just like.
That's.
That's where she liked. So. But here's the thing. It's. As tough as that. I was driving through. Driving. And it's not just. Actually. I was. Are you. A Coleman's. Coleman.
So.
I don't know, biddy, you know, those little biddy. West Texas. Um.
I'm saying. Junction.
So. It was like looked at.
Well. I mean, for one. But I tell you, the hardest thing is.
But you'll.
Plan.
That's. Where the. Is.
I. See.
I mean.
She got a. What is. I got. I got. I got.
So. I mean. Right.
Six.
Right, yeah.
And that's. So. But.
We have to. We have to designate. Have to be able to stay.
I'm. I'm gonna be. I'm. Uncle. So they cut. They. They. Said. To say, maybe you're. So.
I don't.
Yes. I'm just saying. It's. We.
Hands up.
We're.
There's no way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let's rotate.
Yeah. Other agencies to help.
System.
I agree with that.
Don't. Just take.
I'm moving this one second. Francis.
Hey, Tom.
Yes.
I just talked to Glenn, he's gonna square you way on that vendor that we were talking about, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Good.
Good. I try. This makes. Talking.
Yes, yeah.
In the absence.
Yeah.
Or the absence of. In a.
So. I was. Never.
I said that. You have a lot of. Right. Yes, I didn't. Okay. Thanks.
Started.
Yes. Steven. You.
You.
I'm a skinny pie. I'd like to.
Which is. Primary.
In my.
No. Yes.
And it can always be a. Or it can always be my own.
This. This is really what I was.
Well, we're. Some.
Was high. And.
Call. Hundred. So. We.
I always.
It's.
Bring up because this.
It's.
Yeah, you know. This. All percentage.
I mean, that's better than.
Oh, yeah.
I have. Not.
People stuck. From this.
Period.
That's.
Funny.
Just.
Um. What you have to. This is.
Put together.
Karen, online.
Right. Like that gets G T even when they're in here. Sometimes it's when they get pulled out.
That was one of the weird. This year.
It's sort of like, um. You know, I mean, that's a long. Thirty years ago. Um. Ends up.
A lot of it is epic.
This.
It was too volatile.
But I'm hoping.
It's. Because everything. Um.
Pretty.
Sometimes it's. I'm.
Always. Last year.
Yes, different.
I always. Just drive into. Because I think. Structure.
On.
Production.
We have to give maybe those.
For the longest. Don't.
I.
Right now, like. How.
One of those legs. It's. Draw. And.
Every day.
Then this year was.
I was. This is.
You know, she just does whatever she wants.
I mean. I. It's. Reese killed. They're actually. Or not. Like. Excuse. Local.
Yeah. So. That's a family.
I would. Hold my daughter. Yeah, my dad. Brother.
Yeah, she's. It's not a name.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So somebody. So. Or.
It's. It's.
I was. I was.
I. I stumbled across.
I'm.
Have them work. I just. Everybody else.
Other.
Yeah. It's a facilitator.
Come.
Yeah.
Go.
Yeah. Yeah. It's. Very. Which. Which. No, I had.
That new weather.
But he was like. Great.
In years. Hey, holy. I ain't been out there. Seven. But. I'm kind of good as out there. Easy.
And.
I had. What's. I'm not. There's. My brother. My. Another brother goes to Colorado. To help. I'm. I'm back. It's. And they keep trying to convince me to go to Alaska. They wanna do one of those. All of them like. I mean. knocks you in somewhere and you like. Drop there for like a week. Man, I don't. I don't know. I don't know if.
That's pretty rough. I, you know.
Like you take all your gear and you just camp. Uh.
Maybe your speech.
So. And he said. Blah. Now, this is kind of.
I know.
I. Tell us whenever.
Right.
In the. So. Matter of fact.
Up to now, then I'm not. But I would like. Back. Like when I was.
Ever been.
Had.
Heard.
The.
Very quiet. All.
Then when I came here and I was like.
Had a little. Uh.
And they were like.
Correct. Those are.
Or something. And I was like, oh, I would have been.
No, and. Apparently they have the bath house. Spa treatment. Roll water that comes up out of your ass.
Ready to move on?
We're looking.
Oh, we're. Got the timer.
Tom, really, I'm. You had one.
You had that next week?
Yeah. That was.
Yes.
Successful.
Oh, nice.
Yes.
Is that sort of school this?
Yeah.
Now.
Is that. I mean, yeah, I definitely want to find this. I still have a whole. Out right here. But I. I might use that.
I guess.
Maybe. Maybe. Like.
Uh.
Make sure that we're looking at. And it's only one thing we should do. Time this one too. No, I I know no. Like. Which one's. Somebody gets all. You know. Are they. You're having to report on. Yeah, this is. This is. No. Grades.
Oh, two weeks. Yeah.
This is, but I guess. Maybe all students are on grade level.
Long term. Oh, this.
Yeah, I'm going back. I think. I think just.
We.
I've been asked that question four times. It's been for hours. I mean, my. My. Can't. My team is a traveling team to make a cider that doesn't make. Back into.
That.
Yeah. I really. That.
That.
So I'm actually not as amazing. Even it's being. Building. All of social populations.
Yes.
So. We figure out. We.
We.
In the city.
Eventually, when travel.
Oh.
I'll be. Travel. Yeah.
That was mine.
It was. Really interesting.
On growth.
I can. That was.
That's a.
I think. That was.
They.
Measure rate of growth. Twenty five.
But I said, say. The. More. Some. Some.
Like, I haven't always worked.
Away. Oh.
I.
Really no delay, we just really.
Then I hope this. This next. Um. For. I think.
And then. Satisfied some other way to like get there.
Yeah, that's. Been too.
Also. And we can rally.
But this sounds good.
Strong instructions.
There's a lot of things. Like. There's some tests.
Providing me.
At times.
Like it's just till they.
That's good.
And they'll start.
Well.
Like a knife.
Being. I get those.
Oh, not at all.
It's tight.
But the automotive is.
What is yours?
Give a test. On science, I believe, is all I like. For one, I think only one test you.
Eighty, eighty, eighty five, eighty six.
That kind of comes back to.
I do that, it's just there's gotta be some understanding. It's because the automotive department has a hundred fifty.
And they say. Who was that?
I don't control when talent says a certification test. A lot of money for. I'm sure they put them all.
Maybe the person that's all like.
Uh, it's. They're. Their top. I was. Boss. I was. Boss has lost tradition, like.
Be like a.
The. Hell. Absolutely.
I don't like, they got me too.
You're. So you do. Right. That's twenty. I don't get that. But that's. Right. You just keep things. So.
She's. I need. So, if one guy used to be. Fired. You get it? You got it?
Wow.
You got him bleeding. Okay.
First in district.
I, I. I actually.
She loves. So. I like the tea. I, he's.
I don't know. Just.
Having.
It's very profound.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, we're.
Yeah, 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 right, right.
Actually. Or a two.
But. Yeah.
But now, uh, and. Yeah.
Other goal.
Go start.
Next.
But. Usually you can state a counter. Just gotta.
Because we heard.
But I, I tell you, you can't. And every time you build one, it takes capital. Run. That's.
Now we're gonna.
Not ready.
Yeah, we're gonna decrease to three minutes.
It's, it's. Three minutes?
She's saying our value is diminishing. By six, by forty percent.
And that's why I can't. Fall behind. Yeah, we can overflow it. Oh, it's. But I think it works into the financial, it works into. Which was like three things that you all do.
That took up more than last.
Right now, we're in the process of, you know, all time. Denver and Dayton.
Be what's. Supreme or insane.
Building. Okay. I'd so expect. A forty five million dollar project. Not construction.
You like.
Never will.
Ohio.
Right.
Is that.
Yes. But that goes back to those other. That we talked about. What's causing.
Right.
I already.
We're still.
Causing.
Um, but we're not here for. For the order for the. Okay. That's right. Starts to get some green space.
But.
And I know that. Can't start up. All. As some things are. Right.
That's a case.
But, but they. Except to like, you're looking at this for systematic. Approach, not people dependent, you want to be system dependent.
Absolutely.
What are you gonna do? Just let. Well, except that dolphin. You know, ceiling tiles. Just.
Working on, I wanna make sure.
But I won't make you much of an ally to the.
But it's. You know, that's. Prospection.
That is very.
And that for the. For say, oh, yeah.
Got some ball.
You know. So I'd like. Much. Or.
Another side is. Got it.
Have to shut off my.
There's. Just.
But I know there are. Some. Some guys. Yeah. It's gonna be a lot of like.
I know a lot of people.
I don't like. A lot of this. Oh, that, that's what I actually did when I.
You watch. I don't know what's. But I'm like.
I don't like that, I think I watched. But that one. So, yeah.
So. This is.
Yeah, it's a.
Well, you know, it comes down to.
I thought.
I was. Actually. This is the only thing, we wanna be conservative, we wanna build a lot to be.
Hold it. I just like, how do I move it smaller?
Yes.
I'm taking.
Let it, um.
Biscuit.
Yeah, I think that looks.
Next. Building, building. I always remind people, that's where I come from. Church I attended. Find a process. Build by generations. Time to effort to prepare.
Yeah.
By. Yeah. Trade. Yeah, that's. The economic. You have bad schools or stuff, you got a bad.
Okay, let's do. That's one.
Yes.
Thanks.
And that's why.
So.
These are. These are. Yeah, yeah. Evidence. Actually. So are we.
But. Right now, we pass.
Okay, I, I.
How do you go.
I think.
I don't.
It's like maybe.
They keep you.
I'm.
Yeah.
Probably. If you're. Things. They start to come down and we're.
I tell you.
Here's why. So.
This is where I.
A lot of people were like.
Volunteer.
And like, everyone, we all, especially we're on there. Like. We're. He's like. Don't worry. We're not. Times.
Mine is our building. Going to. It's a graduation.
Oh, that's.
Just like.
Yeah, so we'll spend. For.
Yes.
Have a.
Well. Well. Maybe it's. So. And we started off. Now they're. They had a building program.
I feel like this is.
So, me and my team would go in. And we would introduce different concepts, different elements of some projects that we were. And. And I think they're. They're lesson plans.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we brought them into the field. And we also put them to work. On. Asks associated with. At least. Same thing with, uh. I'm not involved in child nutrition. But our. Our child nutrition.
Well, I think that's.
Eleven. Campus.
Yeah.
Why aren't there some kids working in some. Chef. Working in these cafeteria. Mechanics, I've got a great laboratory up. Bus.
Yeah.
You know, can we bring auto mechanics over to work with our. He's in. ASC certified mechanics.
That's right.
And it takes a lot of time and coordination and there's some rules about being under sixteen.
Yeah.
So.
So. A good decent mechanic these days make a hundred thousand dollars, they don't miss three quarters.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So. Interferes, you wanna go back and revisit ours, see what they wrote?
Yeah, we, we can.
So, you're in teams and you're working together and achieving that goal, but if you're also. If you were competitive, you're going to wanna have less kids at the bottom, right?
Yes. It's all of that, right?
Yeah, yeah, this is. So. Uh, basically three goals.
Everybody.
You go back to this.
Take.
Any. For example, it's the one where it's for us growth.
Three dots.
Be a manager.
And there's the dots, I don't know.
And what do we do?
Okay, I, not to the, not to E L T, only the board.
That's the growth.
Oh.
Take my.
Just.
Management. Building. Swarner building, et cetera, et cetera. But then we have.
What do we do? What do you say?
I don't know.
They want to.
I.
You can get three dots. I don't know what you're gonna do with them, but there's your three dots.
What does here we get? Okay, just a board member, okay. Okay.
I got chicken pox.
Chicken pox.
There's two board members.
Take your value.
Hope it's here with y'all.
Okay, so. The stickers are for.
Okay, so.
I don't know how this is.
Now, you've had an opportunity to look at the goals that were generated, so every board member has three dots.
No pressure, you only have three dots.
Only have three dots. Yeah, I can give you another dot. So you have to go around and put your dot on the goal that you think is wildly important.
It can include one of your own, right?
It, it can include one of your own. It can include one of your own.
Question. Okay.
That's funny, so we're recording us walking around the room.
Who knows?
I'm actually.
Yeah.
We believe this.
No, man, come on, man.
I thought you were gonna go.
I was.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm fine. I think we need to see that what happens when I'm sitting down.
Take a picture. Yeah.
I know what I'm thinking, I scheduled an eight o'clock meeting tomorrow morning.
Excellent.
Sure.
Tomorrow's work then?
Second half.
So did we cast tomorrow's work then?
Yeah, they don't sound. Twelve. So, yeah, they're worth it.
That's. Were you at the table when I told you about working on people's business?
You know, Gabe Rosser is on much.
No, no, no.
Classmates.[1397.58]
Oh, that's right, they were doing it for class.
She's still on. Tell her, she's still.
Then I want to invite.
Or they're kind of the same.
Hey, Ms. Rossiter and classmates, welcome. So our board members are rating the goals right now.
I'm still here, Dr. Strata Thomas, but my classmates took off without a long day on Zoom.
They took off, huh?
Oh, they're a bunch of whips.
That doesn't foster a sense of belonging, don't you think?
Okay, so board members, would you go by, would you go and stand by a goal that has more than two dots, please? Okay, so Ms. Hubbard, would you mind reading the ones that have more than two dots?
First one, it was the continuation of the previously established communication goal. I just, we started off just repeating it.
Oh, okay.
This says established meaningful to a communication.
Okay.
I just want to comment, it didn't mean that it's not already there, we're just committing, like continuing.
Okay.
The goal.
Okay.
And the other one was that campus and district climate, or a campus and district climate that fosters a sense of belonging.
Okay.
Those are the two ones that had more than two dots.
Okay, very good, thank you. Mr. Padilla or Ms. Turner, you want to read the ones that have more than two?
Insurance parents are a partner of the child education.
Okay.
And all students should achieve one or more years' worth of growth.
Okay.
He is, well, nevermind, that's, that was a comment. Those are the two.
Okay, good. And what do we have over there, Felix?
Those achievement gaps by a percentage or more, or no more than five percent difference between subpopulations.
Okay. So we've got one, two, three, four, five. So that's five goals.
Now it's going to be the Hunger Games.
I'm sure it sounds like this one kind of goes with that one.
That's what I think too.
Is the belonging.
You think so? You think that one goes?
So can we tear that off and add it to this?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that there were no financial goals?
We had one, but it was on this like continuation of a goal that's already on the, on the list.
I think we assumed that somebody else was going to pick that up because that's something that we really, that is an important thing.
And I think we, so we were good with, so the one for the achievement gaps got three dots and the sense of belonging and the parent group got three dots. So that's important. What was the other one that got three dots? Those, the student growth?
This is about all students.
Right.
Yeah, some of these feed into.
Yeah.
And like there were other things, comments about certain specifics, so all under this umbrella.
Okay. So do we, we don't have any outliers, do we?
No, it seems like student achievement, communication.
And there's got to be a financial one.
And community, right? The one on the bottom with the building the climate for parents.
Oh, we put, we've combined that one with yours, though.
Right.
Yeah.
I feel like you could also tie that to student achievement, though.
Yeah.
All those things contribute to.
I, I think that too.
If you ask my financial, yeah, I mean, we already have a goal on there.
From last year?
From last year, yeah. Provide effective oversight management districts physical and facility function, so this is.
And, and you know, I think when I look at something like that, I think we've already put some systems in place. To help us keep an eye, keep an eye on that because we've got the quarterly bond oversight reports. Yeah.
Me, I put them here about the bond oversight.
And so I think that's something that, that continues as a matter of practice. I mean, we can leave it on there, but the way we work with our district improvement plan, once something becomes part of the practice of what we do, then we take it off the plan because now we've incorporated it into our mode of.
Okay.
Of operation. So we can, we can see it, we can view it in that manner. Now, if there's something about the finances that we didn't accomplish last time that we want to focus on, I think that, that's.
No, just, yeah. The only, the only thing I wanted to bring up was just the ERI, but I don't know if it's too early for us to be trying to put that in something, or even if it's even, even if we should or not.
I think we should, how.
I think it's too early because we're still in the beginning of the work.
Right. I think hard, I think our focus on closing achievement gaps.
And the social belonging, I think, kind of ties into that.
And the belonging.
Engagement.
Yep. They do really tie into that.
Out of the ERA, you're likely to have action plans, right? Those can easily be tied back then with these goals, likely, and what else? Not reinventing the wheel, but you're utilizing the work in the ERA committees to help fundamentally work on SEO, the, the community, and then closing achievement gaps.
And if your second goal is communications, then they can communicate with the work that, that they're doing.
So I tell, I tell you what, in order.
Can I add, just add something? Just, I just want us to remember that the, the whole notion of WIGs is based on very high level goals, not, not specified activities that are going to get us to those goals, or goals that are not all encompassing. We, like the ones that Morgan are holding, you know, it's tied together really well. Make that one big. Diversity and inclusion, I think the ones on that wall had diversity, inclusion, the ROI stuff, coupled with some of the community stuff, building the climate for success. That could be, almost all of that could be formed into one massive WIG that we'll focus on and then determine, you know, lead or lag from there on each one of those. But, um, and then of course, the achievement gaps, those blend themselves into the achievement gap, but the WIG itself or achievement, achievement gaps can be simply closing achievement gaps.
And the evidence of attainment is all the.
That itself is the WIG, not like specifics on just closing achievement gaps over the next X amount of years. Can be the goal there. And then, of course, by doing that, you have to examine how those gaps, why they exist, how much they exist.
So are the two right now that we're talking about, achieving, closing achievement gaps and whatever that effective.
Talking about like the culture of belonging, which includes how parents will be, oh yeah, what was yours? Also student achievement, right?
You've got.
All students.
They tore off is what you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have the part from the bottom that goes with that goal, this is.
So we, I thought that was all going to be on student achievement.
So.
That one's pretty fairly specific, like the closing achievement gaps, my, agree with me, but in my opinion, that's one way. And then the other one is the one that, the stuff that Morgan is holding all really ties closely together. If you consider diversity, inclusion, the climate, then the other one was the parents. Almost that, those three things kind of can be one, if we word it right, could be kind of one way.
Kind of the communication, though, right?
Say again?
Like under communication?
I don't see, I don't know how that ties to communication.
I think, I think if we were to take, I'm sorry, I think if we were to take both of these things, the way we kind of pull it all together is that we as a district foster a sense of belonging, which includes multiple partners, like.
But.
All the speakers being involved and engaged in the learning process.
I'm talking about evidence of attainment, communication.
Right, I agree, Morgan.
Evidence.
Oh.
Yeah.
And that, that way it encompasses all of that.
True, that's where I was getting confused.
So can I invite a subgroup of you that is not a quorum to bring together? And you know, Billy and I meet on Tuesday mornings for breakfast, I could invite you all to breakfast, we could in, in iron this out before the next meeting? Kind of put them together, are you all willing to do that?
Yeah.
Or we can continue to hash these out, it's just kind of looking at the time and your brain power capacity.
I'm down for that because I'm there anyway.
So Edgar, can you talk to me one of those supply boxes, there's probably tape in there, I'll tape this to this.
Anybody else want to do?
So is it, yeah, one more person wants to come? The quorum?
Two more, we can get two more.
I probably can.
That could be there.
Felix? Okay, not over spring break?
You mean after spring break?
Yeah, after. Yeah, no, not the excuse.
Hurt somebody else's.
Okay, so me, Felix and Cher, are you?
Yes.
I actually, I love that composition because it really allows for new ideas.
And what we'll do, we'll put it on a Google Doc and share it with all of you so you can see what we're composing and putting together. All right, I'll send out that, I'll send out that calendar invite. All right, for the good of the, of the cause, is there anything else that you want considered that didn't get some attention? Like some of the ones who didn't get a dot, is, are you feeling very, any particular strength toward that? Or are you leaning toward anything that could maybe be included or woven into one of the other ones?
I think that you're, whatever about the counseling, like the direction we are going with that whole counseling idea.
Yeah, I mean, I, I still think that we have room to expand our scope on that project. To, and, and I'm, I'm really sorry for whoever tried to read my writing over there, I was.
Yeah, that was kind of hard. Lisa could read it, thank.
I was just like. I was going a hundred miles an hour. But expanding this, it, it's hard to say that because you don't want to suggest that the effort isn't there.
Right.
Right? Or that the, the people that are working on that are not doing a just phenomenal job of growing it. But the, the, the scope of that whole effort and the comprehensive nature of it is really what I hope we continue to explore from A to Z. So the, the starting, starting, and I think the last time we were talking, we were saying like eighth grade and, and moving towards that model by the, the time they grad, by the time they graduate high school, every single student has been comprehensively assessed and provided information on every single option for their post-secondary future in a codified, formal manner, which takes not just human resources, but some processes and some systems.
Personality.
Yeah, some very deliberate systems in place to make sure that that exists. Here's what that does, it tears down barriers, it, it counters myths about accessibility to higher ed, it counters myths about accessibility to work after high school, to military, whatever they want to do. And I think I mentioned to, to Glenn when we were talking, using myself as an example, my parents' advice when I was in high school was, go to college. Okay, what, what do you mean? Well, we don't know, but go to college. Right, so, so I kind of had to figure it out on my own, whereas, and, and that's, you know, a lot, a lot of us fall into that, into that realm, but I'm hoping we can get to the point where instead of looking at it as counseling and advising, we look at it as kind of reverse engineer. What is the first outcome that we want for all of our students? And what's necessary to get there? And, and by there, what I don't, I don't mean college, career, military. What I mean is having a comprehensive set of tools and resources, knowledge and ability to make a informed decision for your post-secondary path. Not choosing a path or not going down a certain path, but having this, the ability to make an informed decision about your path and not be static. Right, if, if we can, if we can do that for every single student and we leave no one on, on the field, right? I think we've all used that terminology a little bit before, no one gets left behind, no one left on the field. And, and they have something tangible. And on top of that, there's a resource that as alumni they can utilize. If a year goes by and they're still kind of lost, they can still come back as alumni and be like, hey, I remember we talked about this. Is there something y'all, can y'all help me with this? And there's, is, there's a resource that can help and guide them in a certain direction. So.
Yeah.
That, that to me is, it's really, really important for me to acknowledge the work that's gone into it already. Because I've seen, I think we've all seen that as board members, but it's more, it's more than human resources or FTEs. It's processes and systems and, and a focus on the final goal and then reverse engineering it. And that's just how my crazy brain works. So, um, anyway, sorry, I didn't mean to go down a rabbit hole, but I'm not sure if that would be a WIG or if that would be part of one of our other, maybe it's part of our DIP or something, I don't know, but.
I think we also have to acknowledge, just because we wrote something down, doesn't mean it's not happening. I think what it, what it means is a renewed commitment from us, that these are the things that we are going to hold ourselves accountable. These are, that's the lens that we're looking through. So I, I appreciate especially Edgar that you acknowledged that there's been a lot of work in that area.
Oh, yeah.
I certainly don't want people to feel like these are things that are not being done. This is just renewing our intention and our focus on those areas because we know this is what gives kids great outcomes.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so.
Book study.
And I, I'm going to go ahead, ELT, you can go home at this point. You guys haven't read this book. We're just getting started. You're, you guys are, ladies, y'all are welcome to leave. Todd, I can manage the, the Zoom. Yes. How many, how many people are left?
What did I do wrong that I didn't save? I clicked air.
That was a cookie.
Okay.
As you're typing in, as you're.
I was sharing my screen the whole time, they didn't see anything.
So if you press OK.
Sure.
Should everything, that cell should say.
All right, well, I can, I can.
I tried and I was.
Auburn tried because he's.
I copied Billy's state statement and I was all over the place.
Okay.
I mean.
I'm going to need a one oh.
What did I do?
No. And it somehow ended up copying your whole statement.
Wait, oh.
I was like.
Oh, but does it have to be recorded since this is still a board meeting?
Yes.
No.
No matter what thoughts, you know, happened before I got to the meeting, the one thing I always want to do is stay on the guidelines serving as a board on the three and stay true to the board. Thoughts, philosophy, as they focus on the content. And regardless of what conversation we had here, do not take anything personal, you know, and it's not easy to do all the time, but that's why I got elected in a lot of the conversations that I had with people out in the public. And that's exactly why all of you guys got elected, right? So that's the first thing that comes to my mind and that's why I try to focus on every time in the meeting here. So I know Morgan will get me in line sometimes, but it's helpful to have somebody with a lot of experience. And in your cases, I can call one of you guys and get some injection, interjection into what we're doing, but.
So what does that compel you to do, Felix?
It comes, it comes, it compels me to, when I make a decision, when I make a vote, to think about the kids first before anything else. That's my thought when I come in here.
That's awesome.
Second thing is finances, you know, how does that affect us? And I know at some point I'm probably gonna know, know on something because that feels strong beyond that. But so far it's been kids, 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 you know?
I, I, I think for me, you know, one of the things that stood out was no one forces a trustee or a board to govern well or poorly. The choice is entirely theirs. And so how we choose to, to act when we're in a disaster, and I just kind of wanted to piggyback on Felix. You know, her, you know, emotions and we talk about the six guidelines. And here they talk about the six, six guidelines when it comes to friction. Well, I look at it as the six guidelines when we bring in new board members. And so I'm really big on relationships. Something everyone knows that, whether it's with you guys, city, state, whatever. I want, I like to build relationships. And so like I've, I've talked to Billy before, when I'm, like I met with Cher when she first got elected, I've talked to Felix. It helps me as a board member to know where your hearts are and where your passions are. So when it comes to time for a vote, I'm not looking at it or anybody's vote, looking at it like, well, why do I think that way? I know you guys and I want to have the other relationships. So it helps me understand and I don't take it personally. You know, when, when you may say something, I'm thinking, oh, I know why they, no, they think that way. And so as we move forward as a board with two new members coming on, I think this is going to be so kind of, almost going to be like a roadmap for us. As we, you know, bring on new board members and the board changes, hopefully we can leave a foundation to help guide them in maintaining whatever level we were trying to get to or what we will achieve, that they will continue it. That's kind of what I took from, from the, from the first chapter.
The reason that I, I bolded and highlighted cohesive, that one part of the sentence there cohesive unified team working together to create a common vision driven by shared moral imperative. And I think the book doesn't, it doesn't say this explicitly, but it suggests this cohesion does not mean agreeing. And unified team working together to create a common vision. I think what we did tonight was lends itself to that, right? Creating the common vision that will be executed by leadership and, and staff at the district. And the shared moral imperative is to me, the easy part. We all want the students to be successful, right? We all want them to, we want, we all want to close achievement gaps or examine why that's the case. Why those exist in the first place, not just for us, but for, for other districts. And then as I read through, and then I read our mission and vision statement again, I kind of asked myself, they're, they're, they're clear, right? I mean, we, we have good vision and mission, vision and mission statements. But are they more, I wrote here, are they more than a codified statement? Are they, is it philosophical belief or a commitment to shared fundamental actions? Is it routine? Is it grounded in intensity of action? So, and that's why, the reason that caught my attention in that context is because it occurs to me that over the last several years, several of us in this room have at times pointed to our values or our statement and said, are we doing that? Are we doing that with the decision that we're deliberating on or with the actions that we're moving forward with? Are we doing what we say we're going to do on that or on that or on that? So that notion of, of crafting a vision or mission statement and then parking it, right? Is, is that what we're doing or is it actionable? It just, it just kind of hit me like a ton of bricks. And then most importantly, what's our role as a board under the pursuit of good governance? And the constraints from our compliance bodies, I have to tell you all that, that is, I've never gotten used to that as a board member. And I, I honestly don't, I, I really struggle with the prescriptive nature of, it's really hard to innovate when you're told exactly what you can and can't do. Right? And I think that the prescriptive nature of public ed in Texas is necessary for a lot of really good reasons. But man, it can, it, it feels like it can handcuff you. And when I say you, I mean, our leadership team and our teachers who are trying to do good things, but I don't know, you, you can't because this is what we have to do. So that's, that's out of our control. You know, there's nothing we can, we can really do about that. But the question is, how do you innovate inside of that? So to me, again, going back to the beginning there cohesive, are we cohesive? Do we all understand the norms that are referenced here? And the, the Felix, to your point, page 23 really caught me and I touched on that in the next question. But the one that really caught me is that number three. Staying focused on content, not behavior or style and ignoring rhetoric. It was like, again, you know, kind of a ton of bricks moment because I think oftentimes we interpret things. I'll speak for myself. Oftentimes I can interpret things based on inflection or based on body language or base, and the reality is it's not unusual to be wrong about that interpretation, right? For any of us. So assuming that the, the people you're working with and your fellow board members don't have malicious intent is really important. Assuming that they, or giving them the benefit of the doubt is really, really important. Because it opens your eyes to what they're actually saying. Instead of understanding or believing or thinking that they have a conclusion or, or reason or motivation to stay what they're saying. So I, I, I thought this whole chapter was really, really good. I thought the, when I, when I wrote the question, I know it's not, it's probably more than one question in there, but I just wanted to kind of, I was just kind of pouring out, but where my brain was going on the mission and vision, whether or not they're actionable, how we interact as teammates, and then whether or not what we do is, is compulsory or actionable. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but that's kind of where my brain was when I wrote all that down.
I think, well, to me, this right here, we never talk about that. We never talk about how we do, how we do that. So to, to me, that's, that was what I meant. I think I got them backwards. And maybe we never should talk about that. I don't know. So to me, that statement is stagnant, even though I love it. We just never talk about it and we never talk about what we're doing, how what we're doing affects any of those.
I think we, we reference it when we feel like we're not doing that, but we don't reference it every day in the work. And maybe that's the disconnect because we'll say, are we inspiring excellence in character, community and education or?
So then the question is, how are we?
Right.
How are we inspiring excellence in community?
Right.
But that's more actionable maybe than you can think of evidence.
Exactly.
Those things.
On a small level, go ahead, Cher.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I thought about more of the vision, like, because I say to myself, okay, our vision is to be the premier choice in education through innovation, leadership and diversity. And then I'm like, what does the premier choice in education look like? Like, do we all have different understanding based on our background knowledge or what are we comparing to? How do we know we're the premier choice? Like, is it that everyone's moving to Hutto? Is that if you live in Hutto, your child goes to the schools in Hutto rather than like a charter school? Like, how are we measuring this?
Look at that on that. Where's the data?
Right.
Right.
I, I think about this a lot because I always say, okay, we want to be the premier choice. Well, then I need to see what all these other districts are doing, make sure we're doing it better.
That was the intention though, is that we wanted to set ourselves apart from other, not only other public schools, but some of those competitors and we want to, we want people to say, oh, that's Hutto, that's where I want to be. That's where I'm choosing to.
Or have you heard about Hutto, what they, what they're doing over there for this thing or?
You know, when I first decided to run after taking the, the class, I came to a few meetings, got to know some of you guys, some, some I could not meet because you guys were busy. But I learned enough from everyone here that I realized and came to the conclusion that there was not a political agenda. And that to me was the opening door because we all know what's happening in Hutto, you know, city council. And none of that happens here. So most of the stuff that we discuss here is this is where we're at, this is where we want to be at. How do we achieve that, right? And back to your point, is it the premier school, you know, choice? My thoughts is, my thought is i- if it's not at that par, at that level that we want it to be, then how do we get it there? And without anyone having an agenda, that, that really becomes functional.
The focus.
Yeah.
And you talk about, you know, measuring, you know, my personal story is that I had five families from Round Rock reach out to me personally. And they're like, we love Hutto, we hear great things about Hutto. And since we're like right down the road, right on the, on the border, on the boundary line, I'm calling Farley Middle School and talking to the principal and the next thing you know, they've already enrolled their kids into the school district just based on reputation and, and hearing all the good things that we're doing. So, but how do you measure that? I don't know. It's just a personal story that I've, I've been able to.
Actually, there is a measurement we can use right now.
You know, but there's also a measurement of how long you've been on a board, all three of you guys and Terrence too, that tells you a whole lot about how stable the group is and what the accomplishments have been accomplished. When you have a lot of rotation of new people, it tells you a whole lot more about the board, right? So I applaud you guys have been here a long time. It's, it hasn't been, it's not easy to commit and then to be able to work through all these things and, and leave here without being completely fogged of, we were trying to do this and, you know, it's easy to accomplish. So.
So right now, when you look at being the premier choice, we have a total of 746 kids who are in other places that belong to us. That's almost a whole school. So there, we get a, we get a transfer report through Templeton demographics. So this is as of last fall. 14 kids in Austin ISD, 11 Chaparral Academy, 10 to Georgetown, 26 to Harmony Science Academy, 14 to Jubilee Academies, 10 to Maynor, 119 to Meridian. That's the big one. 21 to Nios.
Meridian?
Mm-hmm. 150, get this, 150 to Orinda Charter School.
Who?
Orinda.
Oh, that's Gateway.
Is that Gateway?
Uh-huh.
I thought it is.
We've got 84 in Flugerville, 104 in Round Rock, 30 in Taylor, 18 in Thrall.
That Meridian is an IBC school, right?
Yes, it is. And that's why a lot of people want to go there.
An IB school?
Yeah.
Is Gateway also?
No.
No. So I would want to know, what are those, what are those two schools doing that we're not, then why are that many kids going there, you know?
And then you're not even talking about the population of homeschooling that's going on.
Oh yeah, because you wouldn't get that because they're not enrolled. Let's try.
Yeah, my neighbor has seven.
And it's, it was interesting that the candidate form last night, out of the four, running three, homeschool all our kids.
I, I want to go back to the list of guidelines we're serving on the board.
What page is that, Morgan?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Going back to like really one, two and three, honestly, I feel like we're very fortunate that we have, even with the two newest board members, I feel like we have enough of rapport and an understanding of perspectives. We may not agree on everything, but we can, we can always come to middle ground together. And so I feel like I'm, I don't feel like I have to necessarily measure how I'm communicating with us. But I do sometimes wonder if like that's, that level of understanding amongst us, does that translate outside of this circle? And the reason I ask that is because if we're going through activities where we're supposed to be vulnerable and, and put ideas down and then it's completely unintentionally hurting people's feelings or maybe feeling people feel like their, their efforts are not being valued. Like where, I don't know that that's addressed in here, but I feel like that's something that we have to figure out how to come to terms with. Because that work won't get done unless we have buy-in from all those stakeholders. Does that make sense?
I think.
Makes perfect sense because if we can't do that stuff in here, that's exactly what this thing over here says about being a sense of belonging and, you know, because if we can't do that in this room, then how do we expect that to happen on a campus?
But having a sense of, I should say, and having a sense of belonging, again, to, to Morgan's point, that number five there, do you not take differences personally? Or, you know, the, the notion of no false harmony or, well, I'll, I'll put it to you this way. There's been many times where we've been in meetings where myself included has said something like, please, please don't take this the wrong way, but I'm not saying that so and so is not doing this, but that's an indicator that we're still, that there's still a preoccupation with if we're gonna, are we gonna offend someone? Right? So, and I'm guilty, I do that myself all the time, right? You, you, you qualify your statement to make sure that people don't feel like you're trying to be offensive. And what that does inadvertently is it, it keeps those barriers up, right? Where if we just acknowledge openly that we're gonna crack some eggs and get after stuff and we may not agree, but it's not personal, it's in the interest of the district and what we're trying to do, then I think it lends itself to real problem solving that requires real conversation. And again, I'm, I'm, I'm as guilty, guilty is not the word. I do that as much as anyone. Because you don't, you innately, you don't want to offend people, right? I mean, you, so you, you qualify those statements and then it almost loses its power of contribution because you've qualified it. So.
Diluted it at that point.
Say again?
I said, it's almost being diluted at that.
Yeah, it's almost diluted because you're, you're equivocating it somehow, right? So.
You're presenting an opposing view.
Right. And that's, and, and it's naturally, that's why I included the, the five dysfunctions of a team in the bottom. Because as I was reading this chapter, it really sparked that book for me that I've read.
Well, it starts with that bottom tier, that, the trust.
Right.
And that's the foundation of all.
And how do you get rid of that? You go first, right? You, you just jump in and then mining for clock, for conflict, does it, it's not mining for confrontation. It's mining for conflict. It's understanding, why does Terrence or Billy or whoever feel this way, right? And how can I understand it better, even if I don't agree with it? Doesn't mean ultimately you will, it means you seek to understand. So.
So I know one of the, yeah, the top 24, always be true to the norms of the board. In our, in our cabinet, we have norms that we review at the beginning of every meeting. We've never established norms.
And what do you review?
So I think that, and we've never established.
I thought of this, when I read this, I thought these should be norms. So when new people join the board, they understand. We, I'd establish the same thing for the PTA, actually.
What you do for PLCs, it's like a.
Yeah.
And that's what we've been doing at the ERI task force. You know, we talk about the norm before we start the meeting.
Yeah, we, we norm. So we don't have any norms and perhaps maybe.
Should incorporate these.
Yeah, we should. Because one of the norms that we have in our cabinet is to listen with, with intentionality, right? And to assume positive intent. And when people make a comment, it's with a positive intent. Even though it might be a comment that's contrary to how, what you just stated previously or what you believe or contradicts what you just said. They're saying it with a positive intent. They're speaking with their heart.
You know, I'm glad you included the triangle here because the fear of conflict, that is my conflict, right? And most of the time, you, you don't think about it from that fashion. But when you have to deal with tough subjects, especially in the ERI right now, you've got to be able to understand the other side. You've got to be able to understand what the other person's thinking.
And that's got to go both ways too.
But it's going to bring a better resolution.
So are there any possible actions as a result of this learning?
We, we should create norms.
I think we should incorporate these norms, yeah.
So is that something we want to do in our next workshop? Because they don't have to be adopted, right? They're just something that we agree to?
Mm-hmm. We could put them in our operating procedures.
We should, I think.
But do we want to develop them together? I guess that's what I was thinking. Or maybe, maybe that's something the people that are getting together for the goal setting. Maybe that's something that you, and then we can talk about them as a group.
I'd rather do them all together. I think there's value for something that bit in doing, everyone doing it all, all of us doing it together.
Do we want to wait a month on it? I guess that's the only thing I was thinking of because it would be done in a workshop, right? That, and if we're okay with it, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, but.
That's fine.
Feel free, feel free to disagree.
It's been intentional.
The interest in, in, with intentionality.
So I think as long as we have it done before the next election, so that the new board members know the norms, that's, should be our goal.
Yes.
So our next meeting is April the 8th, which we're going to be reading chapter two and we can start by establishing our norms before we do chapter two. You all good with that?
Dr. Schramani still with us?
I also think that, I mean, it's like, you, you said, and Edgar put in his comment, if we just sat in here and talked about, well, here we have a vision statement, but none of us knows what, how we're measuring that. I think that, that we need to address that.
For me, our vision is measured by retention, mobility. It's measured by, in, in innovation, you look at how many innovative programs have we been able to bring in? I think we've been doing a good job with expanding our fine arts offerings are the innovation.
How do we determine or how do we define what innovative is though? Like, do we have a working definition of what, what something would have to be in order to qualify for?
That's a good question. I don't know that I have a rubric, so to speak.
I, I guess to me, I think we've, sometimes we have to like say these things out loud, you know, however, wherever that comes in, you know, to remind us all, like, we say that, we say the vision statement before a meeting. And maybe we just add like a statement of, this is what that looks like. and maybe we just add like a statement of, this is what that looks like in Hutto ISD. You know what I mean? To, to say, like, how are we the premier? How are we striving to be the premier district? Like, maybe we have a statement that goes with that, and Hutto ISD, this is what that looks like for us.
It would also, oh, go ahead.
I think, when I talk to employees every Monday morning, the way I communicate the vision statement, I give them, the visual that I give them is I give them, it's a, it's a, the Google map picture with the Hutto boundary of where we exist and how we're surrounded by all these wonderful school districts. And then I tell them, I know all these superintendents, I, I have breakfast with them every Wednesday morning, we're all good people, we're all after uh, duty by, by kids, but it's important for us to be that premier choice because we're after the very best employees to have in front of our children. That's the number one indicator of student achievement, is having the very best teachers and employees working here. And that's why you're here. We've chosen you, you've chosen us. That's part of our vision, is attracting innovative people. And I, and I, so I, I go around and meet people and say, who are you? What are you going to do for us? And where did you come from? You'd be surprised where people are coming from. This lady moved from Buffalo, get away from the snow. She's a crossing guard for Pete's sake. And so I tell her, and people who come from the business sector, you have an innovative way of making us more efficient? Because you're bringing a practice from another state or another industry, that's what we want you to do, teach us. Because we, we want to grow, we want to get better. So I go on and, but that's, that's on a very surface level. That's how I introduce the vision. When I talk about the mission, I talk about, what is your superintendent expecting you to do every day? I expect you to inspire kids, and I expect, I expect you to inspire each other for excellence, because we can't make anybody do anything. It's about, how are you going to get the very best out of kids? You can't threaten them, you can't coerce them, and if you did, you wouldn't be working. Right? We expect you to inspire. I want to inspire you to be the very best. And I talk about character in the hipper way, and this Hutto community, and what the Hutto community expects. So they get that, that introduction from the very, uh, from the very beginning. I think our recognition on, on board meeting days, even though it's lengthy, our principals understand the mission, and when they select people, it's based on those characters. How are these children, not just the kids who are doing a bang-up job, it's the kids who contribute to their school and who are contributing members. So I, I do think there, that we are living this by how we operate and how we treat each other. That's all part of character. And I think the, the board, I mean, you're the perfect role models for that. We just have to keep reminding ourselves.
Yeah, I, I think, as an outgoing board member, I, I'll tell you, I think the district is on the cusp of, not just tremendous growth, but two pretty much brand-new board members, right, in Felix and Sharp, and then two new ones coming in. And then the experienced folks on the board. So I think it's going to be, when you combine that with that dynamic with the growth that's happening, plus coming out of COVID, there's going to be more activity in the next year than there has been in the last several in, in our district, in others. We have to build the, the systems that are going to prepare us for that. Right? Not just from a management perspective, but to your point, from a leadership perspective. Right? You can't compel, you have to inspire and motivate. How do you do that? It's easy to compel, just bust out an org chart, I'm the boss. Well, that's also the worst way to do it. So how do you, how do you lead, inspire, motivate, um, get people to believe in these tenants? And why, we're, you know, there's one verb on that line, to the very front. I mean, how do we get people to do that? That's the moving target. And it doesn't mean that everyone's going to be happy all the time, it doesn't mean that there's not going to be problems. What it means is, there's a singular vision that is, actually means something, right? People can tie back. So, so forty X is, is, you know, all about the wigs, and then you've got your, your, your lags and your lead measures, and you have, you know, all of these things that tie back to that wig. What are, what, what are the things? In other words, if you're doing something and it's, doesn't directly contribute to the goals that you have set out, then it's either incidental or wasteful. So, so what is it that we're doing that's incidental? And what is it that we're doing that's wasteful that is not tied to our wigs? Incidental is always going to be there, right? You, you, you've, you've, you've got to keep the people clean. You've got to, you know, those things are going to be there. But I think that super hyper-focus is going to be necessary. If, if I'm, if I'm reading, he leaves, right, in the next couple of years, this thing is going to go boom. And I don't think, I think we think we've seen boom, but we haven't.
No, I mean.
It's going to go boom, and then what are we, where are we going to be?
It just, we're going to be over nine thousand next year, and probably over ten.
We need to make sure with, like, three new neighborhoods coming in, that all those parents aren't trying to go to Gateway and Meridian, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we've got to do, we've got to do a bang-up job of making people feel like they belong here. Now, it's interesting, I shared this story, and I know it's getting over time. The things I told Billy about our book studies, that, uh, one of the, one of the ways, I, I have like, three or four book studies going with these poor people, but one of the things we hold ourselves to is twenty minutes. That's what we do. It's a, it's a focus questions, we talk for twenty minutes, we set a timer, and we, and then we end it. We might need a little bit more time. That sense of belonging, the dissertation I wrote thirty years ago was on the sense of belonging. It's probably one of the most powerful emotions in belonging is, it's an emo, it's a powerful emotion, it's almost like hope. That, uh, when someone, when a human being, a child or a teacher, you, when you don't feel that sense of belonging, the first thing you do is you check out mentally. The second thing you do is you, you check out with your feet, just leave. So that one is, is important. And one of the reasons I wrote that dissertation, my high school principal, who was also my first boss, he hired me. Uh, I was his student, he graduated me, and then he hired me as his assistant principal. He had an amazing way of making people feel like they belonged. Had a massive high school, thirty-five hundred kids in the valley, um, high poverty, gangsters everywhere. You walked into the building, one of the things that sometimes aggravated me in the morning, when I would arrive, you'd never had quiet time, because the building was full of kids. He got to school at six o'clock every morning and opened the building, because he knew parents were driving off, and he wanted the kids to have a safe place to be. And I had a talk with him one day, Mr. Worthies, can we please close the doors so we can have some quiet time? The teachers want some quiet time. He says, Selena, look at the walls, do you see anything on them? No, sir. Walk into bathroom, is, do you see any graffiti on the walls? No, we don't. He says, these kids love this school. This school is their home, and they're not going to crap in it, not going to mess it up because it's theirs. And Mr. Worthies was wonderful, everybody loved him. The thing is, when I was hired as an assistant principal there, only twenty percent of the kids were passing the toss test at the time. Because to him, it was all about keeping everybody happy, but he forgot about the high expectations. And soon after, he lost his job. He started out with all the right intentions. So that's why I wrote, that sense of belonging is powerful, but you can't forget about the high expectation. So we don't want to go too far one end, making everybody feel wonderful to be here. We, they, we've got to hold them, we've got to, we would do, we would do kids a great disservice by not holding them to, to high expectations. But that was my dissertation, sense of belonging.
I'd like to read that copy.
And how you create that in schools.
I don't know how we got off on this subject.
Well, I know.
Very, very closely related. And, and I'll tell you, it applies from pre-K all the way up to the board of trustees. That sense of belonging is really important.
But it's almost like our vision and mission, right? How do you measure it? And what are you going to look for? It's the evidence of attainment, what are you going to hold me accountable for?
What does it feel like?
It could look like.
But today's exercise, in just stuff like this, or to be able to find the measurements, find the metrics, is aligning us back to the goal of being able to have measurables and having attainable goals that, that we can shoot for and surpass those, so I think we're heading in the right direction.
What else do you have, Edgar?
I'm good, I'm good. Um, those, those two questions were, were in each one, but.
Actionable items? Thank you for writing them.
Yes, sir.
Great start.
Flying breakfast. Terrence? On you?
No.
Hold on, let me get logged back in, make sure it's there.
Wait a minute. Certain someone is not here to.
During the meeting.
Does anybody else have anything else?
I, I would like to just say, um, I felt like today, we had, we got through a lot of stuff today. It, it was my hope that we'd be able to break up some of these things so that they weren't like marathon meetings, but sometimes we have to have them. But I feel like these times where we're doing like goal setting, it truly has to be its, its own meeting, so that we don't feel rushed through it. We might have been able to get through, like, the narrowing down of things. I know it's not always possible, but I, I feel like we owe that to you as well, Dr. Thomas. I want it to be a meaningful activity that everybody gets a chance to process through, so. I can't find the agenda item to adjourn. Who wants to adjourn? All right, Felix, I have a second. Yes, ma'am?
Before you adjourn, um, are there any particular agenda items that you want for the twenty-fifth? Because what's going to happen next week is spring break, so we're not going to have that week, we're going to come back on Monday, the twenty-second, and the agenda has to be posted five o'clock that day.
We're going to have some action items from tonight's.
Yeah, there'll be, uh, it'll, you'll be pleasantly surprised, there'll be no more presentations, because we've done them all today.
Now we'll have a two-hour student recognition.
No.
I'm just kidding. Kind of.
No agenda items? We, are we able to, like, if there's something that comes up outside of this meeting, are we able to send that request to Billy and?
Oh, yeah, because she.
There should be a Glenn's presentation about the ninth grade center.
Yes, yes, the ninth grade center, uh, budget.
And the mask update does not need to be presented, because that's, that's, that's unactionable.
Not bringing anything for us to vote on, right?
Correct.
For taking that out of our hands, to tell you the truth.
No, she didn't, because she said, well, you guys have the authority to.
Yeah, but I mean.
I mean, to be clear, that is, that is our responsibility to make, and so if we feel like, we feel like that needs to be discussion, we would have to have a discussion and vote on it. But it is, according to the state, it is in our hands, it is our responsibility as, as a governing body to make that decision.
And we actually have a motion and a second on the floor right now, so we need to address that.
Any conversation or discussion needed about adjourning?
I motion to adjourn.
I seconded it.
I was waiting for you to say all in favor.
Can I say one more thing? So I sent you all an invitation to breakfast on April the first. This is our cabinet meeting, uh, especially for, for Felix and, and Sharp, it'd be great if all of you can come, I know we all have, uh, regular jobs. But the Kalahari is giving us a free, uh, meeting room there that day, so we just have to pay for lunch and, um, and breakfast. And, because we never got them together for Christmas or principal's occasion. So we're going to have breakfast, have our meeting, and also have lunch, uh, there. So if you all are free, come join us for breakfast, or you can come join us for lunch.
I wanted to make sure I heard for me, because I didn't want to make sure it was in the April Fools joke.
I was going to say, I don't know.
One thing on top.
That'd be a good one, though. Show up to Kalahari. There's nobody there.
Some trunks?
Ask you guys if you have anyone in.